Commissioner Benjamin?
Here.
Commissioner Benars?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Chair McCoy? Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a full house. That isn't always the case, especially at the Salem Housing Authority meeting. So, we'll move right through this. This will be a very short meeting. And if you're wondering why it's so short, we're required to have one meeting a month, so we have that whether we have a lot of business to do or not. This is not one of those evenings where we have a lot of business. So, we have no approvals -- we have no additions or deletions to the agenda. Is there any public comment?
There is no.
There is no public comment. So, we're moving to the consent calendar. Commissioner Lewis, do you have a motion for us?
I do. I move passage of the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Commissioner Lewis to move approval of the consent calendar. You want to speak to your motion, Commissioner Lewis?
Not -- I don't have anything other than to ask Andy if he has any comments on the annual or the monthly report.
Yeah, we'll take care of that, so.
Okay.
Okay. Been moved by Commissioner Lewis, seconded by Commissioner Benars to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We move along. There's no resolutions. There are no action items. We have an information report. Andy, do you have something you'd like to point out in the information report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would. I'm just --
He's pulling double mics.
Yeah. I sure would. In the business profile, we put an article in around the Veterans Rental Program that we're putting in place that officially started on the 3rd of October. Funding comes from the Oregon Health Plan, and we're hoping that the 42 is just the start and that we can scale that up over time. So, we're excited about that. We think it'll help a lot of folks, certainly 42 veterans at a minimum. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the work you do. Moving right along, there's no special orders of business, there's no unfinished or new business. This meeting, the Housing Authority City of Salem, is adjourned.
Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order this evening's meeting for the Urban Renewal Agency for the City of Salem. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
Present.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member McCoy?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Benjamin?
Here.
Board Member Benars?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here. Thank you. I appreciate everyone being here this evening. It's always wonderful to know that the community really does care. We know you do, and appreciate you taking time to come down this evening and testify. I want to just let everyone know there are a couple of different opportunities to sign up and speak, and the first one comes in our Urban Renewal Meeting, and then the second one comes for the regular city council meeting. So, just to be sure if people were able to sign up, and we have sign-up sheets up on the counter. If you have any questions at all, if you're not sure which one to sign up on, there are staff here who can answer those questions. And even if you're not on the list, when we finish, all of those who are on the list, I do ask again if anyone present wanted to testify and didn't get their name on the list. So, just want you to feel welcome and feel that you're definitely going to be heard this evening. There are a lot of people here, but we'll make time for everybody. So, thanks for being here. So, with that, we will move to our member motion for approval of additions or deletions to the agenda. Member McCoy?
There are no additions or deletions to the agenda.
All right. That was easy. We have no reports of boards or commissions. This is the time now for public comment. Is there anyone signed up? Nope, not for the Urban Renewal Agency. All right. Then we'll move to the consent calendar. Member McCoy, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Member McCoy and seconded by Member Benars to approve the consent calendar. Member McCoy, would you like to describe what's on the consent calendar?
Well, it's short and sweet. It's the minutes of the September 12th Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Thank you. That is short and sweet, and again, this is one of those meetings that we have to have by law, and though there's no substantive meeting agenda, we are by law having to have this meeting, and so I see nothing else on the agenda, and I will adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Do we have to vote?
Yeah.
We have to vote.
Oh, we forgot to vote. See, I'm in such a rush to get to the rest of everything else. We do need a motion, a vote on the motion, right?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both say nay. There, motion carries. Now, we will adjourn the Urban Renewal Meeting. Thank you. You'd think I was doing this for the first time instead of after six years. Maybe it goes downhill from there. Okay. All right, I'll now call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for October 10, 2016. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Here.
Counselor McCoy?
Present.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Benjamin?
Here.
Counselor Benars?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here. Thank you. Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion regarding additions and deletions?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. I move approval of additions and -- well, additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Benars to approve the additions and deletions to the agenda. Member McCoy, would you please describe what those might be?
Well, there's the change here on Item 6A. We had a potential appeal for the Planning Administrator's decision for a development on Barberry Street Northwest in West Salem, and that appeal has been withdrawn, so nobody calls it up tonight. The decision will be final. And under 6G, we've got to add it to the report, Planning Administrator's decision that was approved for a petition to divide a lot on the southwest corner of Ratcliffe Drive and Pheasant Avenue into three parcels for residential development.
Is there any -- are there any questions regarding the additions or deletions? Seeing none, we'll move to the motion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Is this where you want me to make the motion to change the agenda?
Yes, if you're going to reorder the agenda.
Yes. I would move that we order the agenda and move Item 4A to after reading of item of the second reading of Item 72A.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Benars to adjust the order of the meeting, moving Item 4A, the public hearing, to the, in effect, to the end of the meeting, actually. Counselor McCoy, do you have -- can you explain that to all of us?
We're making this motion. We've got -- Item 4A is the rate case for water, sewer, stormwater and sewer. We've got a lot of people signed up for that. We have a few people signed up for the Items 71A and 72A. We thought we'd move them ahead, get that done, and then have full attention to be placed on the water hearing. That is the reason for the motion.
Excellent. All right. Are there any questions from counselors regarding the adjustment to the agenda? Counselor Anderson?
I'd actually look at it another way. Since there are more people here to testify on 4A, I think they ought to testify first before the people who might be here to testify on the others, so I'm going to vote against the motion.
All right. Is there further comment? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries with Counselor Anderson's no vote. Thank you very much. It's now time for council and city manager comment. Are there comments from counselors? Counselor McCoy and Counselor Benars?
Well, I've had all kinds of things. I was busy here in the last couple of weeks. Two that come that I'll bring up here, three, I attended the League of Oregon Cities Convention along with several other counselors, and it was held here in Salem. 300 people came to town. I thought it was a much better agenda than the last year I attended, the first year, and that was because we came to support our own Brad Nanki, who served as president of the League of Oregon Cities this year and did a great job being the master of ceremony, so to speak, all the way through the convention, gave a great speech on the last night to a full house and did us all proud. So, congratulations, Brad, not only on the full year you gave. I know you gave a lot of your vacation time going to meetings and trips, but for the leadership you gave, League of Oregon Cities, we're all better for it. So, thanks very much for that. Also, I went to a really fun event. It was Manufacturer Day, held by SEDCor, and they honored the Manufacturer of the Year in Salem. It was Cab Door, Cabinet Door Systems. Didn't even know it existed. It's off Pringle Road. 200 employees, a really, really impressive operation, and one of the owners took me through it, and I spent an hour wandering through and looking at all these very cool machines that carve out a panel for a cabinet in a matter of seconds in just precision manner. And it was very interesting. They're shipping all over the west coast, grew 20% last year, and slated to grow another 5 to 10 this year. So, it's one of those sort of hidden gems we've got in the city that's really adding to the livelihood of the 200-plus employees and bringing in new revenues to the city. So, there you go.
Counselor Benars?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I had the honor and privilege, and so did about 800 people yesterday, to attend the chef's night out. It was very well-attended at the convention center. We had over 1,000 people, actually, who came in, and 45 local restaurants, wineries, breweries, distillery, I think there was a couple of those offered delicious specialty foods and beverages. The generous local businesses sponsored the full cost of the event, so 100% of the ticket sales are going to go to feed the hungry families in our community, and ticket sales generated about $40,000, which equals to about 120,000 meals for hungry families. I think it was really significant. It's a great event. If you haven't been to it next year ago, it's a lot of fun. I didn't eat lunch because I knew I was going to get quite full with all the food that they serve there, and it was a lot of fun talking to friends and neighbors. In fact, Counselor McCoy and Counselor Nanki were both there that I saw, and it was a wonderful time supporting a wonderful social net for our community here.
Great. Wonderful. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the last meeting, I announced the presentation that was done by a gentleman named Chuck Moran, who was the founder and head of an organization called Strong Towns, whose goal is to, I'm paraphrasing here, but help cities deal with growth and other issues in a responsible, cost-effective, and financially strong way. He gave a presentation on the afternoon for elected leaders, and Counselor Lewis showed up and had a good dialogue, I think. There were some issues, discussions that was had that was good to have, to hear from all different sides, and he put on a presentation at the Laux Auditorium that had in excess of 200 people there, including Counselor Bennett, who introduced him, Counselor McCoy was there, the city manager, Steve Powers, was there, and the director of Urban Renewal Agency, Kristen Retherford, was also there, and I think it was a good program. I know it is someplace on Google, so if you just look up Strong Towns, you will find the presentation he gave there, and you will also find some material that I think is quite interesting for the entire council and administration, and also for the citizens of the City of Salem.
Thank you. Other comments from counselors? I have a comment, information I'd like to share. October is Philippine American History Month. I recently signed a proclamation declaring October 2016 as Filipino History Month in the City of Salem in recognition of the positive impact that Filipino Americans have made in our community. As part of the celebration of Filipino American History Month, a special event is being planned later this month. It's called Historama, and it's scheduled for Saturday, October 29, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Historic Elsinore Theater. The event is presented by the Philippine American Chamber of Commerce, the Jamie and Dory Lim, and supported by the Council of Filipino American Associations. Historama is a celebration of Philippine history and heritage and will include dance, live music, and short plays. It's a unique opportunity to raise cultural awareness of the Filipino heritage and its contributions to our community, and tickets are available at www.philipinehistorama.com or through the Historic Elsinore Theater. So, I wanted to be sure to share that with people. This is actually a performance from, actually, out of Toronto, Canada, has toured nationally and has selected Salem, Oregon for a major Oregon appearance, so we're very excited to have them in our city. Counselor Anderson?
I realize I probably don't get a second chance, but I was sitting here looking at some people in the audience. I think there might be some people here for the public comment on Number 8 at the end of the meeting, and I'm wondering if, since the council has moved up 7A and B, if perhaps it might be appropriate if there are one or two people on Measure Number 8 to move those forward at the same time, too. I mean, I still think we should do 4 first, but if we're going to do it that way, it'll accommodate the people of 7.
Yeah, we have three people. Thank you, Counselor Anderson. It's always a good idea to remember that. And we, there are two people who were signed up to talk about Big Jump, so actually, they should be on the earlier group. And then there's the third person, Mr. Courtright, who has signed up to talk about the Third Bridge. So, actually, that comes during the ordinance time when that's introduced, so we're good. I think we're good.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
As long as they're okay, we're good. Thank you. All right. We'll fix the sign-up sheet. Be ready for that. Okay. Does our city manager have some comments?
I'd like to, on behalf of staff, join in the appreciation and thanks to Counselor Nanki for his volunteer hours representing cities on the League of Oregon Cities, serving as the president.
Wow. And to thank Mayor Peterson for her participation in the conference, her showcasing the city and your participation on the panels. From the feedback that was received, your participation was well-received, and knowing smiles and some great wisdom was shared with elected officials from throughout the state. So, thank you.
Thank you. It was a lively conference.
Yes.
We had, I believe, about 900 people in Salem for the conference, so that's a great economic development boost for us, as well as a great civic boost. So, it was great. Thank you, Brad, for all of your service.
Thank you.
So, you're on their board another year as past president coming up? Is that the way it works?
I will be on the executive board next year, starting in January, as immediate past president, and that's the end of the sequence of leadership. And then, as long as I'm in an elected office, I will be a past president, so a non-voting member.
Wonderful.
So, I could leave here and move to eastern Oregon 10 years from now, be a counselor, and I'd be back sitting on the board as a non-voting member if I wanted to drive across the state.
And you may want to do that.
You never know. Teleconference as well, so.
Wonderful.
Because we do have people geographically all over the state, which is one of the things I reminded them of, is everybody talks about the urban-rural divide, and it's like there are more rural communities, so get involved and make a difference.
Absolutely. Good job. Well done.
Thank you.
We're very proud of your service. Very proud. Okay. We have no proclamations or presentations, and now we have time for public comment, and I think we have a sign-up sheet. We do. All right. We have several people who signed up for public comment on agenda items other than the public hearing item. And I will call first Jim Shepke, followed by Lowell Wested. Wetzel, perhaps?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Jim Shepke. I reside in Ward 2, and I'm here tonight representing a grassroots citizen organization called No Third Bridge, and I'm here in opposition to Item 7.1A, which is an ordinance bill 1416 making major comprehensive plan amendments pertaining to the Salem River Crossing Preferred Alternative. We're very concerned about this. We've been opposed to it for years, but we're especially concerned about this process that you're embarking on tonight. We do not believe it conforms to our statewide land use law. Our statewide land use law requires citizen involvement under Goal 1, and I'd like to read to you from the Oregon Revised Statute about what citizen involvement means. It means that a citizen involvement program shall be appropriate to the scale of the planning effort. The program shall provide for continuity of citizen participation and of information that enables citizens to identify and comprehend the issues. To assure that technical information is available in an understandable form, information necessary to reach policy decisions shall be available in a simplified, understandable form. Assistance shall be provided to interpret and effectively use technical information, and a copy of all technical information shall be available at a local public library or other location open to the public. I've left a handout at everyone's desk. It looks like this on the first page, and this is the website where less than a week ago, last Wednesday, 63 reports, technical reports and documents were posted for the public, less than a week ago, and those reports and documents totaled 3,500 pages. And I brought my copy of Moby Dick with me tonight to illustrate that reading 3,500 pages would be like reading Moby Dick three times. This is not good public involvement. The public has no opportunity to review these documents, and neither do you. Now, on the back of your handout, I also wanted to show you that much of what is posted on the web has holes in it, things that are missing. For example, a whole section about jurisdiction is not there if you go to this report. And it says "error bookmarked not defined" in the table of contents. It's because it's missing, because there's nothing about jurisdiction in this report. And I happen to know that there was something about jurisdiction in a draft report that my group got through a public records request. So, if somebody wants to ask me a question, I can tell you what the draft report says about jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Shepke. Your three minutes is up. Can you wrap up?
I'd love to tell you what the earlier report says about jurisdiction.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counselor Anderson?
Mr. Shepke, could you please tell us what the earlier report says about jurisdiction?
So, here it is. This is in an earlier draft report. I brought it with me. It is missing from the report on this website. It's just gone. It says nothing, and this is the Salem River Crossing Land Use Technical Report, and for some mysterious reason, the paragraph here about jurisdiction disappeared. What does it say? Not much. It says, "A decision has not been made regarding the future jurisdiction of the Third Bridge Crossing." So, it's not very helpful, but at least it addresses jurisdiction. And what is jurisdiction? Jurisdiction is who's going to build it, who's going to own it, and who's going to maintain it. So, here you are tonight about to do a first reading, and we don't know who's going to build it, who's going to own it, and who's going to maintain it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony and your time. Lowell Wested, followed by Angie Obree. Welcome. And you do have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on. At the end of three minutes, the red light comes on.
Hello. My name is Lowell Wetzel. I live in Ward 7, and I am also concerned with the Third Bridge. You know, as a citizen of Salem, you know, our taxes seem to go up and pay for such boondoggles that we get to see right here. I would like to see, you know, where the traffic intersects back into West Salem. We see that there is too much crossing of streets, which is not going to alleviate your congestion problems that you see currently without severely modifying streets, as with the plans we've seen with, in several of the other plans. In the plans we see where you see the, you know, alternative sites farther away looked a little more acceptable, whereas this decision appeared to have been made without public I don't have much else to say. I didn't get as prepared of a statement as Jim did, so.
All right. Are there questions from counselors? All right. Thank you for coming down. Is it Angela Obree, followed by Pat Norman?
Yes, it is Angela Obree. I'm with Salem Bike Boulevard Advocates. I live in Ward 1, and I'm here tonight, I think it's 3.3 on the agenda, which is the Big Jump application. I'm here to encourage your support for that application. It's a great opportunity for Salem, and it's a grant that focuses on low-stress, high-comfort bicycle options for the 60%. Now, you've seen my face before, and I'm always talking about the 60%. So, those 60% of cyclists in Salem, you don't see them because they're the cyclists that have their bike in their garage, because they don't feel safe with currently on our streets. Or, they're the cyclists that put their bike and their kids' bikes in their car, drive down to Riverfront Park, and park in one of the parking spaces, and then rides their bikes around. You also don't see that 60% here at city council, because it's hard to ask for things that you don't really know exist, and you certainly maybe have not experienced yourself, so you don't ask for them. But I've been around town, and I've been talking about these 60%. It's okay to not be brave and strong. It's okay to be interested in your riding your bike, but concerned about your safety. And people light up when I talk about it. They see themselves. And so, tonight, I actually brought some pictures of them so that you could see them as well. I can see it online. Okay. Here they are, the 60%. I was going to say, there is actually some nice music that works on the computer. How, but not apparently here. But what I like to point out about these pictures is that there are citizens of all shapes and sizes and ages and abilities.
Thank you very much. Can you sum up real quickly?
Yeah, I want to really encourage the council to approve this application. Let's move forward. Let's bring in some outside resources and see what can happen right here in our town.
Great. Thank you. Questions? Counselor Benars? Counselor Lewis? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Angela, for coming down here, as you have done so many times, and in fact, as a result of your persistence and the group, we have had bike lanes installed on both high and church streets. My comment- My comment is not really a question here, but my comment is, I'm also getting a lot of flack from drivers downtown who've lost a lane of traffic, who don't see anybody using those bike lanes downtown. I just encourage, as you are with your people, to make sure that there is a high use of those lanes. My comment back to some people have been, once Union Street has been completed, the improvements in Commercial and Union and up and down Union, I think it'll do a better connection, getting the rubber bridge connected into both High and Church.
Thank you. I will say that I have seen those bike lanes, and I kind of love it when I see a cyclist within those lanes. I've actually had several people come to me and tell me they've used those lanes and how helpful it was to have the buffer space. I have not ridden them, because there's no safe way to get from my neighborhood to those lanes.
To them, right.
So it's lovely to have lanes downtown, and look how far we've come, but without a connection for the people who are concerned about being with traffic, right? So I can leave my lovely neighborhood street, and then there's about four blocks with my kids. I'm in traffic with cars moving too fast, so I can't get there to use them.
In your discussion, just make sure people are using these lanes. Otherwise, it's going to look really silly, and a lot of people are already upset because we've jammed up traffic at night. Anyway, thank you.
Well, I certainly think they can put their bikes on their car, drive downtown and put a parking space, take their bikes off their cars and ride them. That's one option.
Counselor Lewis, you had a question?
Yeah, I too want to thank you for your involvement. The idea of the friendly bicycle lanes is something that is specific and needed in the city. But I got to tell you, I have to push back on the 60%. That's about 100,000 people. I'm not saying you couldn't make it safe enough that if they had no other option, they'd ride bicycles, but for that to be their first choice, irregardless of the safety factor, I think is a gross exaggeration.
I think anecdotally, that I think that probably holds true in Salem, but I think statistically, if you look at the research, what we know about transportation options is if people feel safe, they make different choices. And I'm certainly not advocating myself, as a mother of little boys, right? I'm not thinking I'm going to take my bike from downtown Salem, and I'm going to bike all the way to Kubler. But there are so many trips that are right within our own neighborhood that are not very far, whether it's taking your child to school, or whether it's to your church, or whether to your local park, that right now don't feel safe. So could 60% of the population ride all the, you know, seven miles across town? Well, probably not. Could 60% of our population, if they felt safe, ride to their local park? Yeah, that's something I could get behind, and I could see happen.
Counselor Anderson, you had a question?
Yes, I do. I have first a comment, because this is really not the time for this larger discussion that were points that were raised by councilors Bednarz and Lewis. I happen to take the opposite view, of course, but what I think this project could do is give us some information on to how helpful these sort of bicycle projects are. I will tell you, I use them all the time now downtown, and I think they are very helpful. So that's why I'm in favor of this project, to get us more information and to get a specific information as to Salem as opposed to general information. Then the question I have, Angela, is all those people up there were citizens of Salem, correct? I recognized a lot of them.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Weekly, I get emails from people saying, "I heard you say something about walking or biking safely. Could I find out more?" I mean, weekly, I'm getting these responses from people as word is getting out. There's certainly an interest. The thing is, you can't ask for something that you yourself have never experienced. We really have not in Salem. Bike boulevards, neighborhood greenways, whatever you want to call them, really embrace them. Bike lanes is not what I'm talking about when I come and talk to you. It's really not, because that's not who I am when I have kids with me, right? Which is most of the time, I have kids with me. So, but it's these other kinds of infrastructure projects. The great thing about the Big Jump is this really looks to support cities with technical support. So when we have a public works project, and we're thinking, "How do we get a bike across this intersection?", instead of our staff sitting there over days and trying to figure out what's the best way, they can turn, if we receive this grant, to Big Jump and say, "Is there another city in the U.S. that has had something like this? Have they wanted to do an undercrossing, right? Like on for Wallace? Have they wanted to do downtown lanes? Have they wanted to do a neighborhood greenway?" And the Big Jump, so People for Bikes, can go to their resources and pull out, here are four different projects that look very much like yours, and this is how they solved it. And here are the challenges that they faced, right? They're doing kind of the research and the technical support that could make a huge difference for a city of this size that does not have a bike-aid coordinator.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate all your testimony. All right. Pat Norman, followed by Robert Courtright. Welcome. You have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on.
I don't think only three minutes. I'm here to support the Big Jump project. My name is Pat Norman. I am with Just Walk Salem Kaiser. We are a voluntary walking organization in Salem Kaiser. We have about 15 scheduled walks each week at this point in time, and we do special walks throughout the year also. We support this idea. The city could learn. We could all learn from this assessment. We're wanting, we just feel like walkers also will benefit from this. We're talking about safety. I mean, think of the possibilities. Safety is one. Improved public health is another, people increasing their activities. Maybe lessen congestion as far as vehicles. And again, I'm going to say safer streets. That's what we all want. There's lots happening in Salem. So we ask that you please take this step towards a more bicycle and pedestrian-focused city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Bednarz?
Thank you, Pat, for coming down. Pat and I spend every Wednesday morning at nine o'clock at the dog park at Minto Island walking. So we walk usually a couple miles, and you're always welcome to come walk with Pat and I and talk if you want to talk about city things, or, and if you don't have a dog, there's plenty of them to share out there.
Oh, we'd love to share.
So anyway, thank you, Pat, for all the hard work you've put in.
Yes. There are walks every day, so check our website.
Great. Thank you. Robert Courtright.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Robert Courtright. I live in West Salem. I served on the Salem River Crossing Task Force. In August, I appeared before you when you were considering the resolution to initiate the urban growth boundary amendment. At that time, I encouraged you to build more time into your schedule to carefully consider the decision and to ensure that you properly addressed land use rules. Now that the full record of consultant and staff reports are available, I want to repeat that suggestion. As Mr. Shepke mentioned, over the last week, your staff has posted hundreds, if not thousands of pages, of new reports that address land use issues. You need to schedule more time, both as decision-makers to review and understand the relevant rules and reports, and to give the public an adequate opportunity to participate in that decision. Let me echo what Mr. Shepke said about Goal One. The essence and spirit of Goal One, citizen involvement in our statewide planning program, can be summarized in one word: meaningful. Good citizen involvement means giving the public a meaningful opportunity to participate in decisions. That means that they need to understand what's being proposed, they need to have an opportunity to offer comments, and to make sure that those comments have been seriously considered before a decision is made. Let me reinforce that this is a big decision. Under Oregon's land use system, an urban growth boundary amendment and goal exception, which is what you're considering, are the biggest decisions that you can make. More time is needed to give the public, including citizens, property owners, neighborhood groups, and other agencies, an opportunity to review and comment on the hundreds of pages of reports that have been prepared. Earlier, the timelines for this project scheduled three to six months for the land use decisions that you're making. Even that schedule was optimistic. Trying to shorten the process to a few weeks seriously undermines a meaningful opportunity for citizen involvement. Now, I know we've spent a lot of time working on this project, and yes, the public has had an opportunity to comment on the environmental impact statement and development of Salem alternative. But in each of those processes, you deferred the question of land use decisions until later, and now is later. And now is when the public really needs to have a meaningful opportunity to participate in those decisions. So as I did last August, or in August, I'm sorry, I encourage you to take more time, build more time into your schedule for the public to participate in this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Lewis and Counselor Anderson.
Yeah, just one. I'm kind of quizzical, I guess. The expansion of the urban growth boundary for the Kaiser Rapids Park was a larger expansion than what we're talking about. But yet, it happened, from my recollection, relatively quickly. It was almost a no-brainer. So how is this so much different?
Well, I think in this case, we're talking, Counselor, about a pretty significant public policy decision, a major transportation investment. If you compare that to a regional park, regional parks, in terms of the significance of the land use decision, are a different order of magnitude. And again, here, we're talking about a project that requires an exception to one of the statewide planning goals. Again, that's the highest order of consideration under the state's land use law.
Yeah, okay. Let me ask it this way, because the urban growth changes that we're looking for also are to accommodate things like Marine Drive. And we're not talking about whether you do the bridge or not. We're talking about whether we make these adjustments to the boundary. I don't know if I've got a question. I guess I just don't agree. I think we've spent more than enough time.
Well, my comment would be, and I've spent three weeks looking at the proposed decision, the proposal that you are considering is not simply amending the urban growth boundary. It's a decision to amend your transportation system plan to authorize a major regional bridge.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Courtright, are you retired?
Yes.
What was your position before you retired?
For 25 years, I was the Department of Land Conservation and Development's lead staff for transportation planning issues.
Okay. Does that give you some special knowledge, perhaps, about what we're talking about here?
I'm not sure about that, but I think I know a little bit about it, yes.
Then I will ask you one other question to follow up the Counselor Lewis question. There are a few areas of Marine Drive now, setting aside the bridge issue. There are a few areas that are outside the urban growth boundary, and I think you talked about at the last council meetings, that those, it is potentially, there's a way to bring those in without the massive sort of plan we're looking at now.
Yes, exactly, Counselor. Marine Drive, as a collector roadway, may be authorized outside of the urban growth boundary. You need not amend the urban growth boundary to do that. I communicated that to your staff following the previous council meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming to testify. Was there anyone else who wanted to sign up to testify during this portion of public comment and didn't get a chance to? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. We will now move to the consent calendar. Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move approval as consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Bednarz to approve the consent calendar. Counselor McCoy, could you please describe the consent calendar for us?
It's short and sweet again. We've got the minutes of the September 26, 2016 council work session, and the minutes of the September 26, 2016 council meeting. And then we also have Item 3A, which is an application for the Big Jump project. This authorizes the city manager to apply for the Big Jump project and authorizes the mayor to sign a letter supporting the city's application. And this has to do with a national program that's going to pick 10 communities and spend money with grants from $5,000 to $20,000, allowing them to work with the staff and look at ways to improve bicycling in the city if they're so chosen.
All right. We'll call for the question, which is to approve the consent calendar as introduced by Counselor McCoy, seconded by Counselor Bednarz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will now proceed. Item Five, Special Orders of Business, we have none. And information reports. I draw the council's attention to several reports that are on the agenda. Were there any questions or comments regarding the information reports that we've received this evening? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. My first one is on Item 6B, which is the update on the sidewalk rehabilitation plan or program. I appreciate that this is being done, and I'm glad we authorized more money to do it, and this is a good report that lets us know, Director Fernandez, what is going on right now. I do have a question on the map on the back page, the last page. It's Attachment Three.
I'm sorry, Counselor. I'm sorry, Counselor. What item again?
Six B.
What? You're not listening to me? Six B. Six B, Peter.
Okay. I'm there. Thank you.
And I'm looking at Attachment Three, sir.
Okay.
I'm looking at the planned work, and I see it's Phase One completed, then Phase One finished. I'm not sure what that means. And then it's, you know, we've talked about this a lot as being concentric circles, or concentric squares might be more correct, moving outward. And then I see Phase Two, which is outside One, and Three outside that. Well, just from personal knowledge, I happen to live in Phase Three, and my sidewalk was done, I don't know, eight, 10 months ago, maybe even a year ago.
You're a councilman.
Yeah, but I will, I will point out that my neighbor's sidewalks were done, too. So I'm just curious as to how are we completing the phases, and where exactly are we on those phases?
Let me call Mark Bechtel to the microphone.
I saw him kind of moving downward here, and I thought he might be able to talk.
Mark Bechtel, Public Works Operations Manager. Counselor, there's a number of different methods we're using right now with the sidewalk program. The first one is the concentric squares or rings it might be using. We've been using that for a number of years, and a lot of the statistics that you see there are the result of the work in those areas. We've also been working on what we call Critical ADA Routes, or Americans with Disabilities Act Routes. And I'm not exactly familiar with what street you live on, but it's very possible.
That's good to say, yeah.
It's very possible that you live on one of those Critical ADA Routes, in which case sidewalk repair work has occurred on those as well. And for those who don't know what Critical ADA Routes are, these are streets that would give you primary access to shopping, areas of public accommodation, transit, schools, and parks.
Parks. I do live next to Bush's Park, so that could be.
Very likely, yes, you would live on a Critical ADA Route. In fact, because we have been working with groups like Disability Rights Oregon and other groups, we have focused on those Critical ADA Routes. And we have split our resources in the sidewalk repair program between working on those Critical Routes and doing that very systematic concentric work in the neighborhoods, to the point where I think some people may be, you know, waiting for us to get to them, but we have a lot of sidewalk to do. We have over 800 miles of sidewalk to get to. And then we also, with the adoption of this year's budget, have the resources to do what we call the Flying Squad, or the sidewalk repair team that can go to individual locations that are just really bad, and we can deal with those on an immediate basis. And so that team is being worked on as far as getting the people hired and the equipment secured. And hopefully, by the last half of this fiscal year, we will have that team going to different locations and getting those very critical individual locations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bechtel. One comment and then a final question. I'm sure this is the case with other councilors. I go to neighborhood group meetings, and almost every meeting, somebody starts talking about that. And, you know, I say, "Here's our plan. We're doing what we can. We don't have enough money to do all this." But I do say, "The council, we authorize a 10% increase in funding, so we're now up to $1 million a year we're spending on this." And, you know, to quote the late, great Senator Everett Dirksen from my home state of Illinois, "A million dollars here, a million dollars there. Pretty soon, you're talking about real money." But could you just give us a general idea when you think this might be But could you just give us a general idea when you think this might be done, at, at the current rate of construction?
Define done?
Done to the extent that the councilors don't get any more complaints about it at neighborhood group meetings.
Counselor, it'll, it'll be, it'll be a significant number of years. I wish I could, I could tell you exactly how many years. We, we're making progress, the progress is slow because we're now in the oldest part of town that has the largest trees, the oldest sidewalks. In theory, as we continue to work outwards, the work goes quicker. But keep in mind that we, under the current ordinance, we will always be responsible as the city government to repair sidewalks that are damaged by city street trees. So in theory, even as we finish the initial work of sidewalk repair, those trees keep on growing and heaving sidewalks, and, and I'm always scared to say it's a perpetual program, but to some degree it would be, under the current ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, were there any other questions? I think Counselor Anderson, you said you had two items that you were questioning, two information reports?
Well, this is just really a comment, it's on item 6D. It's listed as being in Counselor Nanki's ward, and so I, I looked at it a little bit, but when I look at the inset map on the last page, it, the asterisk where the project is, is on the wrong side. I mean, it's just a totally minor thing, but when you look at that map, the subject property is, is south and west of Airport Road, it goes there, but the asterisk shows it's north and east. And the only reason I say that is that would put it in my ward. But I'm sure it's in Counselor Nanki's ward.
Yes.
Okay, does that conclude questions or comments on any of the information reports? All right, thank you very much. We will now move on to ordinances. We have a first reading and a second reading. For the first reading, 7.1A, Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion?
I do, Madam Mayor, I move...
Excuse me, I think that our city attorney was trying to say something. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Bednarz?
Thank you, I have something to read. Even though with the Ordinance Bill Number 14-16 affects only property on the west side of, of the Willamette River, it does deal with the Salem River Crossing Project. I declare a potential conflict of interest because I own property in the neighborhood where the bridge will land on the east side of the Willamette River. I own nothing on the west side.
Thank you very much. Counselor McCoy?
I move the staff recommendation.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Lewis to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Counselor Anderson?
I'd like to move to postpone the motion until we have had an opportunity to have a council work session to discuss all the reports that have come in in the last week to two weeks about the largest public works project in Salem's history.
Second, it's been moved by Counselor Anderson and seconded by Counselor Dickey. Is there discussion?
Yes, ma'am. This is the report that we received late last week to help us in our deliberations today. It's full of reports and charts and graphs, and that does not count other reports that, oh, that we have in the staff report, I'm referring to this thing, and I took, that was handed to us by Mr. Shepke, but I looked at myself, and there are, I have three pages worth of reports, there have been 63 staff reports since five days ago. A total of 3,500 pages, some of them may be duplicates, but even if some of them are, they're still a lot of pages. There are 74 pages on wildlife, 79 pages on geology. You know, I'm a lawyer, and I'm used to reading stacks of information and assimilating them, but there's no way I could assimilate this. And so I guess my real question is, well, my, my comment and support is, not only does Goal 1 say we need meaningful opportunity for the public to comment, we need meaningful opportunities for the council to comment. And I just don't see how we can, how we can meaningfully digest and vote on this stuff without a work session. I mean, we hold work sessions, you know, on the recent park, school district, park land swap, you know, we held work sessions on that, and compare that in magnitude to what we're doing here. So I, I, I guess my other question is, what is the big hurry after no action for a year and a half, and now within weeks, we have to do all these things? And I, I wish somebody could answer that question for me, because I just don't understand, and I think it's imperative that we have time to look at this, all, all the material we have, and have time to ask questions of staff, and we just can't do it tonight.
Well, I have one comment, Counselor Anderson, to your phrase that all these months of no action, no work. Staff and some councilors have participated in meaningful work on this issue for months, indeed for years. Information has always been available to council members. The MWAC meetings and the SCATS meetings, of course, are always open. So I would not want the public to think that nothing has happened for months and months and months, because in fact, that's when all of this ground, much of this groundwork was done. Is there further comment on the motion? Because we're gonna move to the motion in a moment here. Anything further? All right. It's been moved by Counselor Anderson, and, was that an amended motion, I have to ask for our lawyers? A substitute motion, the substitute motion by Counselor Anderson and seconded by Counselor Dickey, to delay the first reading until a council work session. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Will the nays please raise your hands for a vote count? That's Counselor Bennett, Nanki, McCoyd, Benjamin, Bednarz, Lewis, and Mayor Peterson, voting no. Motion fails. Thank you. We're back to the original motion, as proposed by Counselor McCoyd and seconded by Counselor Lewis, as I remember. Is there discussion on that motion? Counselor Bednarz?
Just a question to process. First reading only takes it to a public hearing at that point? Where, what, what happens after the first reading is what I'm asking.
In this case, there will be a public hearing, which is scheduled for this Wednesday, the 12th.
Thank you. So there'll be a time for the public to have input.
All right, we're ready for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, the two no votes registered by Counselor Anderson and Counselor Dickey, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, we now move to the second reading. Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion for the second reading?
No, he doesn't.
Oh, all right, we just go right to the second reading. Would the recorder please introduce the second reading and take a vote count?
Ordinance Bill 1516, an ordinance to change the comprehensive plan, map designation for 4318 Lone Oak Road Southeast. Counselor McCoyd?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Benjamin?
Aye.
Counselor Bednarz?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
A very pleasant aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye. Thank you. Ordinance passes. All right, do we have another, I think we have no further comment, because we moved the people from that one right on to the other. All right, we're going to move back now to item 4. Let me get back there to it. 4A for the public hearing. And do we have a staff report? Excuse me.
Yes, we do, Mayor, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I am Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. Tonight, I am pleased to present to you our biennial rate proposal. My presentation is a summary of the financial analysis work that supports our recommendation, whose details are included in the staff report and its attachments. Alicia Blaylock, David Lacy, and our financial consultant Deb Gallardi were the lead staff in preparing the analysis. I want to thank them for their work on this effort. I also want to thank the members of the Water Waste Water Task Force. The members worked hard this summer to consider the utilities' finances and the many policy issues that we brought before them. I appreciate their thoughtful consideration and recommendations. As we've done for the past decade, we mailed notice of this public hearing to all 49,000 utility billing customers. Two slightly different versions of the postcards were mailed to single-family and non-single-family residential customers. We also published a website that provides background information, analysis documentation, a bill calculator, and a link for commenting on the proposal. Written comments are included in the materials attached to the staff report and to the materials that arrived today. And when Counselor Anderson was asking me a question, I was busy reviewing a lot of that documentation to see what, what people had said, so my apologies once again to Counselor Anderson. The rate proposal is driven by four financial objectives. One, properly fund the utility's maintenance and operations needs. Two, maintain adequate cash reserves and debt coverage ratios. Three, cash fund needed capital construction projects. And four, accomplish these with small, smooth rate increases over the long term, rather than with periodic rate spikes. Our recommended revenue slope increase for 2017 is 2% for water, 2.5% for wastewater, and 3% for stormwater. The proposed rate increases are lower than previously anticipated as a result of the improved financial health of the utility fund. For 2018, we recommend a 3% revenue increase for all three services. The recommendation is the smallest possible rate increase that prudently meets the financial needs of the utility. The recommended rate increase was presented to the Water Waste Water Task Force in September, and the task force recommends its approval. Council will know that, will note that throughout the presentation, I use the terms revenue slope increase and rate increase interchangeably. A revenue slope increase means that the rate structure is forecast to yield the specified amount of increased revenue. The impact to an individual customer's utility bill will vary depending on their customer classification, consumption characteristics, and the amount of impervious area within their property. Several other recommendations are also included in our proposal. The first is to shift another 5% of cost to the fixed portion of the water bill over two years. The change provides additional financial stability to the utility fund. As you can see in the graph on the right side of the slide, the change adds $1.21 to the average residential bill. The graph also illustrates that even with the proposed increase, Salem will continue to have the second lowest fixed cost billing among our comparable cities. We also recommend small fee increases for customers with backflow devices, farmers who accept our biosolids, and customers who haul their waste directly to the treatment plant. And we recommend paying off the loan that we have from Business Oregon. Staff and the task force spent a lot of time this summer discussing the possible change to irrigation rates. In fact, many of the commentary on the, in your attachments speak directly to this issue. After much analysis and discussion, the task force did not recommend a change to the irrigation volume rate. The proposal before you does not, and I want to emphasize, does not include a policy change to the irrigation rate, nor is the rate proposal in any way influenced by the irrigation issues that were discussed this summer. All water customer classification rates, including irrigation, will be affected by the recommended revenue slope and the proposed policy changes. Over the past year, the utility fund has experienced a $6.3 million increase in its ending fund balance due to slightly higher revenues and lower operational expenses. Council also approved a partial sale of our Willamette River water rights to Hillsborough that, when finalized, will bring an additional $16 million in revenue over the next six years. While this is very good news, Salem continues to experience declines in water consumption. Irrespective of consumption, the utility must provide continuous water, sewer, and stormwater services to the community. Providing these services has fixed operating costs that do not vary by demand. And while reduced demand has allowed us to delay or cancel major capital projects, we must continue to reinvest in the utility's aging infrastructure. The table on the left summarizes the utility, the utility's rate revenues and expenditures over the past three years. As you can see, we have carefully managed the expenditures of the utility such that, such that they have been flat for the past three years. In addition to managing expenses, the financial future of the utility is solidified by setting appropriate rates per service. Because rates provide year-over-year revenue, the proposed increases provide added revenue, not just in the coming year, but for many years to come. The summary on the right side of the slide shows the estimated increased revenues, revenues needed to address the operations, maintenance, and capital needs of the utility. We have also sought additional revenue sources and enhanced existing revenue streams where possible. The four programs on the table on the left are estimated to bring in almost $2.7 million in 2017, which helps offset the current and future rate increases. Our debt continues to be substantial, but will decrease to $67 million in the next five years. Councilors may recall that 10 years ago, the utility's total outstanding debt was close to $300 million. Our recommendation includes paying off the OECDD loan next year. The $5.1 million payoff will save $400,000 per year in debt service payments for a total savings of $2.1 million. Over the next two years, we will also be studying the possibility of refunding the FFNC loan and perhaps start prepaying the parity loan. And for the councilors that were here back in '08, FFNC means Full Faith and Credit, so that is the one loan that the utility has that is backed by, it's the only loan that is backed by the Full Faith and Credit of the city. So it'd be good over time to start to reduce that loan as well. As you will see in the next slide, we continue our commitment to reinvest annual debt service, annual debt service savings into the capital needs of the utility. We estimate the utility's annual capital investment need through an asset management approach. The utility is the community's most valuable asset with an estimated facility value of about $4 billion. If we optimistically assume that utility assets, on average, will last 100 years, we need to reinvest $40 million per year in our capital infrastructure, or about 1% of the asset value. Thanks to debt service reductions and an improved financial outlook, we have increased the utility's capital funding. Two years ago, we planned to spend $55 million over five years. Today, we estimate spending $82 million over the same five-year period. Although we are not to our annual goal, this represents an increase of $27 million in capital funding. The table on the left summarizes the construction budget for utility projects in the adopted capital improvement program. Project expenditures in the CIP represent an affordable minimum program, not the total identified capital construction needs of the utility. The table on the right summarizes the adopted CIP funding sources. As you can see, most of the capital funding in the next five years continues to be derived directly from the rate revenue. This slide summarizes the results of the financial forecast model through fiscal year 2022. The first two columns represent the recommended revenue slope, the remaining columns summarize four additional years. As you can see from the table, we are delighted to recommend a smaller increase for 2017 than previously predicted. We still, however, recommend a 3% increase in 2018. As debt service decreases over the forecast years, note that capital investment increases and adequate reserves and fund balances are maintained. As evidenced by the expense ratio, we plan to spend about 9% more than our revenue in fiscal 2017 and slightly more in 2018. fiscal 2017 and slightly more in 2018. In other words, we're going to spend down a lot of that cash balance that we have, that extra cash balance that we have accrued. Given our strong cash position and history of savings, we believe that this is a prudent recommendation. With future rate increases, our revenue will again very nearly match our expenses in the out years. We have produced examples of customer bills to estimate the impacts of the proposed rate increases. The average single-family residential customer's bill will increase by $2.43 per month in 2017, or about 3.1%. Residential customers with low consumption will see a slightly smaller increase but will experience a higher percentage change. Differences are due to moving more of the water billing to the fixed portion of the bill. For multifamily customers, Fourplexes will see a $2.75 per month increase in their 2017 bills, about 3.2%. Larger apartment complexes and mobile home parks will experience rate increases of around 2% in both years. Customers with substantially higher water consumption, those in our non-residential classifications, will experience rate increases that are below the recommended revenue slope. This, again, is a result of moving more of the water billing to the fixed portion of the bill. The three tables in this slide show that all non-residential customer bills are estimated to increase by about 2% in both 2017 and 2018. Note that irrigation shows a slight decrease because the water volume rates for all users, not just irrigation, all users, reduce by 1 to 3 cents per unit of water in the first This table illustrates how our existing and proposed utility rates compare to 10 other Oregon cities. Salem's rates are, and will continue to be, in the middle of the pack and roughly equivalent to Hillsborough, Gresham, and Beaverton. This chart illustrates how the proposed monthly bill will affect households. The recommended standard by the American Water Works Association is that utility bills not exceed 3% of median household income. Salem's proposed utility bill will be just over 2%. Beyond the rate proposal, the task force also recommended several policy changes. Improvements are recommended to the Low Income Assistance Program. When implemented, the utility will match annual donations up to $10,000 per year. We hope that the matching funds will stop the program from running out of money from time to time. The program will also be changed from one award per year per qualified customer to a $150 per year limitation for qualified customer. The right-side box shows two additional policy changes, the most important of which is that delinquent utility accounts will now be reported to credit bureaus once they are sent to collections. Counsel should note that all other city delinquencies are already reported to credit bureaus. In closing, I am delighted to report to you that the utility fund is in excellent shape. It has been a long time since the dark days of the financial crisis. We have worked hard to manage our expenses, and I appreciate the support that the council has lent to the utility over the past decade. Salem's is an old utility. We invested over $300 million at the turn of the century to modernize and expand the system. We have steadily reduced the debt load incurred from those improvements. We must, however, continue to invest in the utility at a sustainable pace so that we do not find ourselves having to take on sizable debt in the future. The recommended rate increase allows us to simultaneously increase capital investment and reduce our existing debt load. I assure you that we will continue to effectively manage the utility to provide excellent customer service while limiting the growth in expenditures. With that, I thank you for your attention this evening, and I'll be ready to answer questions after the testimony.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your report. Now if we can have the lights on, we will be able to have our public hearing. All right, we have a number of people who've signed up this evening and maybe some who've never been in council before, so we do appreciate you coming. I just want to sort of remind people of our decorum in the council chambers, and one of the things that we discourage strongly is either clapping or booing or in any other way showing support for someone who is speaking. We find that that might actually just slow the process down and disrupt the hearing. And we don't want to disrupt the hearing because then the hearing will have other issues legally, and we don't want to do that. So just encourage everyone to be patient. We'll go through the list, and if I mispronounce your names, I apologize. That happens from time to time. And we'll start with Kent Hunsaker, followed by Carolyn, let's see, here I go right away. Carolyn Seymour, maybe?
Seymour.
All right, thank you. Well, we'll begin. You each have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on at the end of three minutes. The red light comes on, and then I do ask councilors if they have questions, and then we proceed to the next one.
And again, they can use either phone.
Yes, and you can use either. Either microphone is set up. Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Kent Hunsaker, and I live in Salem. I had provided written testimony. I don't know if you have that, but just note that I'm going to talk because I have three minutes, so I need to go quick. I'm making three key points tonight. The first one is that I attended all of the wastewater, all of the Water Task Force meetings. I have to tell you that I was impressed with the staff reports, the work that was done by the committee, and the thoughtful and thorough discussion of all the items that were brought there. The irrigator water issue was probably received more attention than any other issue. On the third meeting, the Water Task Force approved a 30% reduction in the irrigator There was one dissenting vote. I believe they approved that reduction for a couple of reasons. The first one is that the irrigator classification rates have increased by 231% in the last 15 years. Other classifications have increased between 50 and 90%. The residential classification has increased by 88%. 230 versus around 80-some. The second reason is that you heard from Peter Fernandez tonight that the city has a surplus of water. And one of the reasons that there was irrigator rates in the first place was it was a way to charge people more that were using more water at peak times because they had to create more water to serve them, and that was to provide money to do that. That is no longer the case here in Salem. Wow, I'm wasting time here. I'm losing, sorry about that. So anyway, the way the task force works is they approve something, and then at the end of the process, they go and look at all the recommendations again. And when that happened in this case, it was suggested by Counselor Bennett that this actually go away because the issue had become too political. And the task force kinda maybe didn't want to do that at first, but they did it. But I believe if the task force had had voted on that proposal, they would have approved it again. The second point I want to make is that why did it become political? Right? This is an irrigator rate change of a group that has had huge increases. It became political because of the Statesman Journal. Three front-page articles with Creekside Golf Course on the front page and pictures. So what was connected with the residential rate increase was Creekside Golf Course. The reality is, the Creekside gets 10% of that. If the residential rate goes up $8 per year, Creekside was responsible for 80 cents of that. That was never reported by the Statesman Journal initially. And so it created, well, it's Creekside. No wonder. We're not going to do that. But it's not. It's irrigators. They approved that rate because irrigators were being charged too much. Finally, I wanted to mention that if the golf course closes, which is a part of the irrigator rate, and I've said-
Excuse me, I need to draw your attention to, your time is up. Can you quickly summarize?
Okay, I can. I can. There's three things I wanted to say there. Number one, if Creekside closes, the city loses $225,000. All right, that's our water bill. Number two, there will be 68 less full- and part-time jobs in the city. And number three, that's it. The city will lose a critical watershed. I urge the council to consider this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from councilors? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. All right. Carolyn, I'm sorry, Carolyn.
That's all right. It's pretty common.
Your last name is?
My last name is Schnorr.
Schnorr, thank you. All right, welcome.
So, thank you. Good evening. As I said, my name is Carolyn Schnorr. I am the Chair of the Board of Directors for Grace House. And for those of you that don't know anything about Grace House, we are a nine-bed transitional house for women who have been homeless. Most of our women come from the street or the nearest couch or the nearest bedroom of somebody that they may or may not know very well, and some of those women come from the Department of Corrections. We are a small organization. We are a fairly new organization in terms of nonprofits. We've only been around for three years. So for that reason, we depend very heavily on fundraising and private sector donations. So when we talk about fundraising, I'm here to talk about Creekside, not just as a golf course or a golf clubhouse. And by the way, I'm not a golfer. I'm here to talk about Creekside as a community partner. For the last three years, we have held at least two events at Creekside in order to raise funds. One was a golf tournament, and one was soup for your supper. This year, we added a specialty on top of that. So for the three events, we earned $34,000 to help for the operation costs of Grace House. When you compare the cost of homelessness in our community, that makes a huge difference. I'm not just talking about a place to have a fundraiser for Creekside. I'm talking about the kind of service, the kind of kindness, the kind of graciousness that these individuals showed to the women at Grace House, to the donors, those who donated to Grace House, and to those who participated in the events. The women that we serve in our community that are homeless, most of whom have never ever been to any place like Creekside, are treated with such grace and dignity. They all serve in a capacity with staff. They help out with the special events. I see that my time is almost up. They're treated like they've never been treated before in their lives. So I don't want you to just think of Creekside as just this place over there that people who golf and who have the time and the money to do that happen to visit. I would like you to think about it as people who are helping our community. And indeed, homelessness right now is one of the most critical issues in the city of Salem. So I want to think about them as a community partner. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, just a moment, are there any questions from councilors? All right, appreciate your testimony. Thank you. Jeanne Arana, followed by Danny Moore. Welcome. You're familiar with the way this works.
I was having flashbacks. Although it's been a few years since I was here. Good evening, Mayor Peterson, members of the council. My name is Jeanne Arana, and I live in West Salem still. My husband, John, and I have been members of Creekside Golf Course since the year 2003. I'm the outgoing president of the Women's Golf Association at Creekside, or the WGA, as we affectionately call ourselves. And I'm here tonight to speak in support of the inclusion of reduced irrigator classification rates into the latest rate proposal from your public work staff to include Creekside Golf Course. I have read letters to the local newspaper that suggest lowering the water rates would only benefit a select few private membership at a cost to other rate payers. That is simply not true. While it is readily apparent that other irrigators provide a public benefit, in other words, the schools, government, and even cemeteries, I submit that the Creekside Golf Course provides a benefit to the public beyond flood control and recreation. The Susan G. Komen Foundation's Rally for the Cure has been in existence for just 20 years. The Creekside Women's Golf Association has been hosting the rally for 15 of those 20 years. Three years ago, the WGA made the decision to add fundraising for the Salem Cancer Institute as a charitable recipient. In 15 years, Creekside has raised over $130,000 for the Komen Foundation, with the majority of those funds staying local in Oregon. In the three years that we have supported the Salem Cancer Institute, we have raised over $7,000. You might think there are a lot of Komen events, so what difference would it make to lose this one should Creekside disappear? We are the only golf rally for the cure in the local area. Participants in the rally come from throughout the Willamette Valley to donate and play golf. This year, 120 women gathered at Creekside. We sent $11,000 to Komen and the Salem Cancer Institute. We charged a very low green fee to play, and participation was the highest it has been in many years. Our ability to raise money is due in large part to Creekside helping keep the costs down. There are no guarantees that other courses would pick up the tournament for that very reason. It would be a great shame in this month of breast cancer awareness to see Creekside go away for lack of 65 cents a month. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from councilors? All right, appreciate you coming down. Thank you so much. Danny Moore, followed by Greg Idy.
Good evening. I am Danny Moore. I'm the general manager and 31-year PGA professional now at Creekside. Started my career at Ilahi Country Club, then moved to Salem Golf Club, then took a job at Willamette Valley for 17 years, and now I've landed back in Salem. Just wanted to kind of say how, high school golf is what I want to talk about mainly, how that really affected my life and how it started. It started, I was on South Salem High School golf team, and they said, hey, go to Ilahi Country Club, and you get to play some golf. And I thought, man, this is the coolest place ever. And these people opened up, it was a country club, but they opened it up to, obviously, high school golf teams. I came from a pretty normal family. We wouldn't have been members at a country club. So that was my first exposure to golf and country club, and kind of set the tone for my whole life for what I decided I wanted to do. I guess what I'm saying now, at Creekside, we have the same thing. We have the South Salem High School golf team, coincidentally, without our club. We have Corbin University. And these kids are, you know, setting the tone for the rest of their life. They love coming to Creekside. The owners open it up. It's all free for the kids to come out. We try to give them good exposure. And I just remember how much it meant to me at that age and what it did to the rest of my life. Probably wouldn't have gone to college with my family's background, but from playing golf at South Salem High School, got a full ride scholarship to Boise State University, where I went on to play golf, met my wife, et cetera. I guess just what I'm trying to say is Creekside does so many nice things for the community and the kids. And also, I've done budgets at all the other country clubs. When I came to Creekside, the thing that I saw that hurt the most when I was looking at the budgets, I said, well, this shouldn't be too easy. Then I looked at this one large number, which was the water bill. I've done budgets at Ilahi and Salem where there is no number for a water bill due to pumping out of the river. Creekside, on the other hand, we are paying for city water. I guess the best thing I'm just saying in very nice words is any reduction we could get in the water rate would definitely help our country club, which helps the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. I just want to be clear because after, you know, the first few people have also testified. So what I'm hearing, and I just want to understand, what you're saying is that you need a water rate reduction in order to keep your business open? Is that, is that what I'm hearing, or is there a different message in there?
That's, that's pretty much it. It would help tremendously.
So it's just, it's the city of Salem water rate, that's the only thing that would keep your business going versus if we don't lower it, that's, that would be the cause to, it would go away because the rates are too high?
Okay, thank you very much. Greg Idy, followed by Shandine and Jonathan Scott.
Thank you. Greg Idy, Director of Athletics at Corbin University. Again, I wanted to reiterate, as some of the other people that have testified, that this is a much broader situation than just Creekside. Ever since Creekside's been built, they've established a kind of relationship with Corbin University that Danny discussed, and- and they've opened, opened up the course to our golf programs, which has been very beneficial for Corbin. During that process, each year, we have two good-sized golf tournaments each year, which bring in a lot of participants and revenue to the city. In 2012 and 2013, Creekside allowed us to host the NAIA National Men's Golf Championship. I'm guessing that's probably still the only national collegiate tournament final that Salem's ever hosted. We, we hosted in 2012 and 2013. Twenty-nine different universities sent teams here from all around the country in both 2012 and 2013, pumping in a lot of money into the, into the city in hotels, restaurants, a lot of other revenue. We were also awarded, to 2018 and 2019, men's championship once again to be hosted at Creekside. But due to the instability and the unknown, we recently had to turn that back to the NAIA. So, to me, that just show, is a perfect example of how this is a much broader reach than just Creekside and the members or the owners of Creekside. It's us having to turn back that tournament is not good for the city of Salem. I mean, the hotels are losing revenue, restaurants. We, I mean, it's bringing in several hundred people each year, and it's a shame that we weren't able to do that due to the instability of, of the situation. So, I just wanted to bring to light that it's, it's, I've been in, I was in business in Salem for thirty-five years before I became Athletic Director at a CPA practice. I was the president at Ilahi. Salem and Ilahi, Salem and Oaknall were clients of mine. I grew up playing at San Am, played at McNary's, so I'm very familiar with golf courses and the financing of golf courses. And I can assure you that no one that owns a golf course is getting wealthy on the operations. Every dime counts. You know, where they're making their money is on the appreciation long-term of the real estate. But if you look at any golf course's operations, they're basically struggling to balance out the revenue and the expenses. So, every little bit does help to Counselor Dickey's point. But, and I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to publicly thank the members of Creekside for the partnership that they've created with Corbin University. And we, we don't take it lightly, and we very much appreciate their graciousness. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you very much for, for your testimony. One of the things you mentioned was the economics of golf courses.
Yes.
Generally, the appreciation of real estate. One of the, one of the events that occurred during this seemingly endless discussion of this irrigation rate issue was a fairly substantial story in the newspaper about turning the golf course into a housing development. Sort of, come what may, it's going to become a very large, major housing development. Is that what you're talking about? Is that what happens?
No. I'm, I'm saying like, just say the owner of Salem Golf Club, for instance. They don't make a lot of money. They don't make money each year on the operations. It's basically, it really is a civic, it is a civic type of a deal. I mean, where they're going to make the money, the family that owns a golf course is in the long-term holding of the golf course. Maybe it costs them money to buy it, but then, you know, they hold it, and then at some point...
I guess that's what I'm asking, is are we to the end of the long-term holding of that golf course, no matter what happens? That became one of the really difficult messages during this entire discussion was the feeling that no matter what happens over the sixty-five cents rate impact on, on local tax, on local water users was really, is, are we at a point of transition where this is going from golf course to its next iteration as a housing development?
I couldn't answer that. I mean, I'm just, I'm the Director of Athletics, and they've been generous.
Well, you described the economics. I thought maybe you could help me out.
But I, it's my understanding that the owners would like to keep it open as a golf course, is my understanding. You know, so...
Thank you very much.
And this would help tremendously.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, this looks like the Scott family. Individually, you have three minutes each. Did you want to speak as a family and...
We will speak as a family.
All right. Thank you. And will you tell me the name first? Sha, Shannine?
Shannine Scott.
Okay.
That's my wife.
Uh huh.
Answer to anything close.
All right. Shannine? That's lovely. Okay.
My son, Jonathan. We have been members of Creekside for fifteen years. He's only been a member for twelve.
Okay.
And we thoroughly enjoy that, and that would really impact our lifestyle in terms of our enjoyment and my young son's development. And as an example, he started learning how to play golf when he was six months old in the cart. He had a little club. And over the years, last year, he was about a twelve-to-fifteen handicapper, which is a pretty good golfer. Today, because of Creekside, he is now five-point-seven. You will be hearing about him and from him in the very near future. Shannine?
I just want to say, as, as a parent, you look at what's happening with the news with youth that don't have outlets to keep them occupied and, and keep them out of trouble. You know, golf is something that we don't have. A lot of courses in, in the Salem area, so it's very important, not only for me, but for Jonathan. One thing I've noticed in the past few years is the number of young families who bring their children out, you know, not toddlers, but, you know, young children, first, second grade. Unfortunately, I'm not unfortunately, fortunately, I'm out at the golf course almost every day. It's not raining. Thank you. And so, I get to see all the young dads with their children out there, and that's something that just warms my heart, because I've been a former foster parent, and I've seen the devastation of children that don't have role models in their own parents. So, for me, it's, it's not a matter of, you know, the golf course for the people there. It's about, you know, raising our children and providing them that opportunity. I think that's very important. And I will stop, because Jonathan, who is, usually doesn't say a word, is very adamant that he wants to talk.
All right. Welcome, Jonathan.
So, I just have something to add about Creekside. Something that I've noticed in about the not, probably about the solid six years that I can remember clearly of my life, that every time that I've been down there, I'm down there mostly every day, sometimes in the summer, seven hours a day. And they just, the people that work there, everyone, Danny, all the employees, just go out of their way to make you feel like you are welcome there, that you are respected in all aspects. I mean, they remember your name, and it just, it's so nice to just go down there and know that, you know, you're going to get noticed. I mean, you're not going to be left out. I mean, everyone knows everyone around there. And it's really, since the golf course has almost closed, I think the community has builded, has built itself into just this really strong bond that just, they won't let anyone take over.
All right. Thank you. That's impressive testimony from someone of any age. Thank you, Jonathan. Are there questions for the, for the Scott family or individuals? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming down. This looks like Sabrina Deekman, perhaps? There's Sabrina, followed by John Pierce. Welcome.
Is it working? There we go. It's Deekman. Thank you so much. Well, thanks, everyone, for letting me come out. My first time doing something like this, so don't have a lot of statistics or numbers or anything put together. But I have the pleasure of doing the newsletter that we do out in the Creekside neighborhood. And I can testify from more of an emotional standpoint of the families, the golf club out there, and just the meaningfulness of Creekside in general. There are so many cities across this great nation that work so hard to build communities like Creekside. They work so hard, give these great incentives to bring businesses in, like the Creekside Golf Course, to improve quality of life and just to benefit the city in general. And, and we have one, of course, that's, you know, could possibly go away. We don't want it to, certainly. So, and I work with businesses on a daily and weekly basis. Businesses that support Creekside, businesses that love Creekside and that are very, very involved. So, the, Creekside reaches very far into Salem and into our communities and into our businesses. And, you know, certainly, if this water issue can help Creekside stay afloat, also help other businesses with the same challenge, I say, "Let's, let's make the right choice here." So, anyway, that's it. Oh, and I think that Jerry left you all a magazine on your desk, and I believe they belong to him. So, I'm not sure if he wants them back there or not. So, anyway, thanks, you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Anderson?
I, I think you already answered mine, but the magazine is the Creekside Influence?
Yes.
And how often is that published?
We mail it once a month.
And it looks like you've got quite a lot of advertisement. Does that provide any revenue for you or, or not?
Not for Creekside Golf Course. The publication is completely independent.
Okay.
Completely supported in any way we can, so...
All right. So, it's not like, oh, some neighborhood groups have neighborhood newsletters. This is a commercial magazine that is...
Absolutely.
That is focused on Creekside.
And they have, they, you know, they communicate many other ways as well, so...
Okay. Thank you very much. It's a nice-looking publication.
Okay. Thank you very much. John Pierce?
Good evening. I am a resident of Creekside subdivision and a Creekside Golf Course member. I was quite taken back by the fact that, I mean, we knew that golf courses are struggling, but when we got notification at our golf course that we were actually going to close our doors on May first, quite frankly, I was floored. You kind of, you know, you forget to smell the roses, and then somebody cuts the roses, and all of a sudden, you realize it. Holy cow, something you've taken for granted is going to disappear. So, the membership formed a group, and we worked with the owners, and we got to keep the golf course open. We got vilified in the newspaper from one particular reporter and that, for whatever reason, just were challenged with the facts, and it became a, "Creekside is looking for a handout. That is so far from the truth." The reality is that there was a decision made, I'm not going to challenge a decision, but there was a decision made to raise water rates. And the irrigated rate substantially increased over the course of a decade. That had unintended consequences to our golf course. As you know, golf courses are under financial stress right now. More kids want to play, you know, with their thumbs instead of being outside and swinging a club. I think personally, they'd be better off swinging a club, but I understand the attraction of the instant gratification and "I want to do this now" stuff. There's no instant, really, gratification in golf. You know, it takes a while. Some of us have been, you know, frustrated for years playing it. The good news is, you don't have to be a really good golfer to be at Creekside, so that's why they let me in. The reality of this is, is that those unintended consequences, excuse me, caused incredible stress on the finances of Creekside. But low and behold, it was determined that the reason those rates were increased no longer exists, that the cost model has changed. And the reality is that it doesn't cost as much to provide irrigators during peak time with water that it did. So, we asked through the ownership if they could reduce that rate to something that is benefit to us and more reflects the actual cost. And somehow, out of that interaction, came a bunch of rich people looking for a handout from a bunch of poor people. That is not true. I was resentful of it. I didn't like the implication. And quite frankly, I didn't understand what drove it. I get the emotion, but when we talk about facts, it seems pretty basic. I know I'm out of time, but one last thing. There was a question asked. I will tell you that I worked, along with the membership, directly with the owners. And the two owners of Creekside, Art Tokowski and Terry Kelly, assured me in person that their intentions are to keep the golf course open, provided that it's financially viable. I wanted to just get that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Benjamin?
Thank you for coming down. So, you have a lot of intimate understanding of this in regards. And what I caught going through some of these conversations was, early on, they had to build the infrastructure to get the water to Creekside. And they paid for it. Creekside did, for a long time, and continues to do so. And with the advent of different types of fiscus and different types of sprinkler systems, as we move forward, I'm sure you guys use less water over the decade or so. But the residential demand has increased. And since you've used less water, per se, and there's no need, the cost, like you were saying, to get that water pumped over to Creekside has gone down. That investment that was, been paid for by Creekside has been resolved or taken care of. So, I can understand what you're saying about that. Do you think in the future, with this group that you've formed, that you'd be able to help move along and keep Creekside open?
Absolutely. We actually approach water from a conservation, a conservation standpoint. We understand that it's a valuable resource, so we don't take it for granted. So, Creekside has reduced its actual water use by about eighteen percent this year through conservation efforts and a little luck with the sun. But quite frankly, it really is about browning it up and keeping it green where it needs to be green. So, we understand it's a responsibility. We, we believe that the membership and the owners, with help from you folks, we can do this. We can make this happen. We understood, we almost lost it. We have a shot. We, we need your help, but not as a handout, right? In support. We, Creekside, are a community within an HOA subdivision, Creekside Community, within a community at the city of Salem, right? We're all together in this. We need your support in this case.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Joe Vanderbrook, followed by Jerry Bennett, and then David Campbell.
Good evening. I am Joe Vanderbrook, and I wore my LSU colors so that no one thinks my accent's from South Oregon. I am the retired CEO of Silver Falls Dermatology, based here in Salem. My family moved from New Orleans to Oregon in 2006 after surviving Hurricane Katrina for a better quality of life, and we certainly founded here in the Willamette Valley. My son started his medical practice in Woodburn, and we purchased houses in Silverton. But when the base of his growing business shifted to Salem, we decided to move here. In the last ten years, the medical practice has grown from just him, his mom, and I to the largest dermatology practice in the Northwest with over a hundred and seventy employees, mostly based right here in Salem. We could have chosen anywhere to live, but we decided on Creekside because it was a golf course community. And I need something to do when it's not football season. Creekside Golf Club is a business, and it should, should be treated like one when it comes to water rates. When a business does not make money, it has a certain name, and no one knows that name is, because it's closed. A mistake, in my opinion, was made in the past by grouping us with schools, hospitals, and cemeteries. They are supported by the community. We are not. We're a private business. Including Creekside Golf Club, where families wrong on many levels. Making Creekside Golf Course become, become an ex-business will cause multiple problems in the future for the city, such as water runoff into the Battle Creek area, which already has a flooding problem. Again, our water rate should be reevaluated, Again, our water rate should be reevaluated, and we should be treated and charged as the business we are. Thank you for listening, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from counselors? All right. Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Jerry Bennett, followed by David Campbell, and then David Cox.
I'm Jerry Bennett, and I'm one of those very senior group golfers at Creekside. We have about 150 members into one group, and we have reciprocals with seven or eight other golf clubs every year. They all come here, we back and forth. It's a marvelous organization and marvelous system that we're in. But I'm an advocate, and so are they, of Salem, Southeast Salem, Creekside Estates, Creekside Golf Club, and all of the downstream residents that are unduly affected by watershed flooding from Creekside. I'm going to give you a little different spin on some things than you have heard so far. You've heard a lot of facts and figures and other persuasions, and you have a hard copy of my formal presentation. I sent it in early, and it was more on sound public policy. Good for public, good for everyone. So, I'd like to share just a few thoughts of what many call Creekside Golf Club the jewel in the crown of South Salem. It's frustrating that the City of Salem's only golf course in the boundaries of Salem and one of South Salem's largest businesses has to continually struggle with its water needs. I think that formula is broken. Creekside Golf Course is similar to the other four peripheral courses in many ways, but they are not blessed with natural water springs, wells, et cetera. I suspect that if Ilahi Country Club, McNary, and Salem Golf Courses and Melon had similar needs, this matter would have been resolved long ago because we'd had a bigger collection of people that we had all been seeing at the same time, under the same circumstances. We're not the same. Make no mistake, under the present cost of so-called irrigator water, they too would be faced with foreclosure practices. Right now, today, we'd all be up here together. But I digress on this. Creekside Golf Course sits in a 155-acre valley with a 10-square-mile watershed. It is as pristine, environmentally exceptional, and graced with an abundance of wildlife. It is surrounded by 600-plus Creekside estate homes, of which are then surrounded by numerous subdivisions which are growing almost monthly out in that South Salem area. They are all on the city's water system. It is Southeast Salem's major recreational park for all intents and purposes, and it should be there for all times. Your COSA reports, clearly, your COSA, your big studies that you're supposed to do about every other year, and I think the next one's not going to really come out until 2018, clearly points out that golf courses are vital to the communities. It is important that you now take a stock of the invaluable component part of the golf industry in the Salem proper and help it flourish. I will really rush here. Yes, Waterfront Park, going to switch into another vein, and Mental Bridge Park and Park.
Excuse me, I am going to have to call your attention. Can you wrap up?
Okay. I'll just say this. And the new $9 million Fairview Park are important to many, but they are not more important than Creekside and all of its support systems.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there questions from counselors? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down, Mr. Bennett, and thank you for all the information you provided us with before, which I know we've all read. I have a couple of questions because I know there has been a lot of confusion here. So, how many people are members of Creekside?
At this time, it comes in three sets.
Okay.
There's, I'll just say approximately 300, which you call regular members, and those are families, of course, and individuals and so forth. There are another approximately 100 of what we call social members. Residents are up in the Creekside Estates for a very reduced rate, $60 a month, can come down golf once a month. They use all, every, a lot of public uses the facilities, of course, on restaurants and so forth. But they get all those attributes because we want people to be involved. There are a lot of retirees in that area, as there are in many of the housing developments in Oregon. And then there's also another 100 that are wellness members that come down to use the facilities for health purposes.
And does everyone who lives in the Creekside subdivision, do they have to have some sort of membership in Creekside?
No, this, that would have helped years ago when they first, in 1993, when they constructed this business. However, within the Creekside Estates itself, there are only approximately 100, what I'd call, regular members.
Okay.
They come from all over, as far as Woodburn and.
So, the woman who testified here earlier from West Salem, she's a regular member even though she doesn't live in Creekside.
That's true. They're all over the area.
And you mentioned how much the social members pay per month. How much do the regular members pay per month?
Regular members are at $330 right now, and the association that Mr. Pierce was talking about, the, all of the members at Creekside have agreed in this three-stool system that we have to try to survive, survival stool, I guess, that we're going, and we have agreed, $330 right now, we will accept a $65 a month increase to help, also to help, along with the water, to try to make this thing be economic. We're a much lower rated golf course than other courses of our ability.
And finally, one last question, and you may not know the answer to this. If so, I hope somebody else could, either staff or somebody else is testifying. We also read in the paper about some sort of lawsuit between the homeowners' association and developers of the golf course under, you know, can they change it from golf course to homes? Do you know the status of that?
You're an attorney, so I'm not going to get into debate with you.
Well, yeah, no. I am an attorney, and I still don't understand it.
It's a very serious, the homeowner, 600-plus homes right in the estates, and they definitely have filed a lawsuit back to the covenants, the original covenants. The owners have a different opinion as a backup plan. If we don't succeed, then of course, 300, and well, say, 300 to 350 houses will cover that beautiful valley that I think is one of the nicest parks in Salem, easily. And your reports clearly show, your studies, Mr. Fernandez and FEMA say, putting all those houses on that watershed valley will increase flooding, downstream flooding substantially. There's no question about that. All the research is clear on that. It is not a good idea, and, but that's not what, we want to, we would like them to be protected, but we really want to keep that as open for us now and in the future. It's very important, I think, to Salem and to all of us.
Thank you very much.
Thank all of you, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down. Appreciate the testimony. David, oh, excuse me, yes, David Campbell, followed by David Cox.
Madam Chair, Mayor, members of the council. My name is David Campbell. I live at 864 Creekside Drive, Southeast. And I would have to tell you that the backyard is the golf course for me. In fact, that's one of the reasons that I moved to Salem. In 2004, when I retired after 44 years in working in education with assorted things along the way too, like pulling green chain and driving a gas truck and things like that back in the early days, eventually I retired in 2004 after 44 wonderful years in that field. After I retired, my wife Judy and I began to contemplate where we might want to live through our retirement years. I lived in Tewallaton at the time. I looked in Canby, looked in Woodburn, looked in McMinnville, looked in Newburgh, thought about staying where we were in Tewallaton. But we had an opportunity to come to Salem for some reasons, and I looked at Salem, South Salem in particular, and the Creekside Golf Course, and became enamored with that location. And that's where we moved in 2006, and I've lived there since. I've been a member at Creekside Golf Club throughout that time period, and we have come to love Salem as a place to live. My wife loves the newcomers' club, the book clubs, the bridge groups, the many things that both men and women can do in the City of Salem. We like to say that Salem is a city that's made up of many small towns, and Creekside area is one of those areas. And so, what I would say to you is that, in spite of the fact that in Creekside, the citizens through the homeowners' association takes care of our own streets, our own streetlights, our own snow removal, numbers of other things that the city provides other areas, it's still worth it to us to live there because it's such a wonderful area. I would have to tell you that the initial motivation was the golf course. I'm a golfer, and being able to live with the golf course as the extension of my backyard had tremendous appeal then and still does. And all I would ask for the council to do is to look at the whole picture, consider it carefully, look at all the trade-offs that we do on behalf of the city, and look at the things that you are faced with as a council, and I appreciate very much your consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Campbell. I think questions, Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Could you again underscore what you said about your streets, your snow removal, your streetlights? I think that's not commonly known, the situation out there.
Through our homeowner dues that we pay in the Creekside area, our homeowners' association takes care of our streets. Upkeep, when there are potholes that have to be fixed, they do it. If we have streetlights that need repair, they do it. If there's snow that has to be removed, our homeowners' association is responsible for doing that. And so, that's a trade-off, I think. And as I said, it's worth it to us to live there, but it is a trade-off. And that's one of the reasons I would like the council to carefully consider the impact of your other decisions about the water issue, because we as citizens out there, in effect, pay that too. And so, I just want you to carefully consider those issues.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. David Cox, followed by Bill Johnson. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm sure your decision tonight is going to be important to every rate payer, but I believe you're getting the message. It's more than just important to Creekside. It could be the difference between us staying open or closing. So, it's my job here tonight to tell you what Creekside means to the community, sort of the broader impacts of Creekside. And some of my previous speakers have helped me along the way, they've given you an introduction to some of these subjects. So, I think you know about Creekside the business. I'll just be quick. About 50 permanent employees, over 100 seasonal employees. They purchase more than $1 million worth of supplies from Salem businesses every year. It's a big economic impact, and it could be lost. You've heard about South Salem High School having Creekside as their home course, and Corbin, there's more. Blanchett High School also has Creekside as their home course, and Salem Academy plays there as a practice course. So, these students play, men's and women's teams, without charge. Creekside charges them nothing. The taxpayers of Salem pay nothing for this. This is a gift from Creekside to the City of Salem that most people don't realize that we do give. You've heard of some of the fundraisers that Creekside holds. Actually, there's tens of thousands of dollars worth of money given to charities because of fundraisers at Creekside each year. Some of the biggest ones, you've already heard from, the Coleman Race for the Cure in Grace House. You had a real good example of what Creekside does to focus on children. And children at Creekside are a big part of what we do. As was mentioned, they get off their machines, they actually come out and do something physical. This summer, we had 70 kids in the junior golf program. We also have a swim team and dozens more come just to enjoy the facilities. This coming summer, we're going to start a First Tee program. This will be the only First Tee program outside of Portland in the state of Oregon. First Tee teaches golf, yes, but it teaches life skills. It teaches dependability. It teaches punctuality. It teaches kids how to interact with each other and generally prepare them for life. And it's important to say that these children's programs are open to anyone in the city. You don't have to be a member. You don't have to have a parent or a grandparent that's a member. Anyone in the city can come and participate in these programs. Finally, as you've heard, Creekside is like an environmental oasis. Surrounding it all is development, bigger and bigger, but in Creekside, there's deer, there's small mammals, there's ponds, there's wetlands, there's all sorts of birds. All of it, I'm trying to tell you, is worth preserving, and I hope that you've heard that. Creekside is really a community asset, and the benefits Creekside brings to Salem, I think are going to far exceed the cost of any rate adjustment you make.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Your time is up.
Okay.
Are there questions from counselors? All right. Thank you for coming down. Appreciate your testimony. Bill Johnson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow city councilors. My name is Bill Johnson, and I also reside at Creekside Golf Club. This evening, I'd like to make four very important points about water rates and ask that you carefully consider each point as you make a decision on the water rates. The first point is that the current rates are unfair and discriminatory in that they charge one category of irrigators a lower rate than they charge another category of irrigators. What do I mean by that? Residential rate payers, to a large extent, are also irrigators, and they pay just $2.65 per unit, whereas those of us who are classified as irrigators pay $4.24. My water bill, for example, on my individual home, which is a normal size, shows that I pay 62% of my basic unit water costs for irrigation during the three summer months. Can I be that different than a lot of other irrigators, residential users in Salem? Maybe so, but it can't be that far off. Maybe the irrigation usage is higher, but with residential multifamily and commercial rate users using 15 times more water than all the irrigators in Salem, I think it's very reasonable to assume that a vast majority of the irrigation water used in Salem is used by residential users. My second point is that because of these rates and usage, irrigator rate payers are subsidizing the other users. If a correction is made, those other rate payers would not be subsidizing the irrigation rate payers. They would just be losing their unfair subsidy for the irrigation water that they use. My third point is that the rate changes since 2001, namely raising the residential water rates just 88%, while increasing the irrigator rates 231%, have been discriminatory and have been injurious to many people in Salem, Creekside Golf Club being one. In the 1990s, Creekside Golf Club most assuredly based its operating viability on the water rates at the time. Irrigation water for a golf course, which is a business, by the way, is a necessity, not a luxury. To increase the rates 231% and keep them while offering no viable alternative to city regulations to attain water elsewhere will certainly continue to have a negative impact on the course and could be detrimental to regulators, neighbors, over 500 users of the course, and the city as a whole. My fourth point is that the current or future water availability and conservation cannot be valid reasons for increasing the irrigation rate so high and leaving them there for such a long time. If they were rates, if they were, the rates for residential and other irrigation users who are bigger users of irrigation water would have also been increased. If they were valid reasons, Salem would not be selling future water rights to other people.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there questions from counselors?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Brian Delashmet, followed by Darwin Sandow.
Mayor Peterson and members of the city council. Mayor Peterson, you did a good job on my name. It's not always very easy to do. My name is Brian Delashmet. I reside in Salem, Oregon. I don't know when Salem became less of a community and adopted the us versus this, us versus them mentality. Through less-than-balance reporting, the irrigators' request for a rate relief has been seen as those rich folks in South Salem wanting other water users to subsidize their lifestyle. While the thought of Creekside members being rich is far from the truth, most members of Creekside are middle-income folks with a number of retired state troopers, nurses, Salem firefighters, educators, state workers, along with a number of middle-class folks. For years, irrigators have paid a much higher rate than residential customers. You've heard $4.24 since. While the total water use by all irrigators is 5% of the total used in Salem, Creekside has been vilified and is only 10% of that 5%, or one-half of 1% of the water used in Salem. This should not be all about Creekside. It's about fair rates for all irrigators, including Salem schools, along with the list of others, including hospitals, cemeteries, and others. Irrigator rates, as you've heard, have gone up 231%, while residential rates have gone up 88% since 2001. I supplied this. It should be in your pack. It has the chart of the rates, and also shows by the graph, the upward scale of rates of all the users. I ask you to look at that. My second point is the economic loss to Salem. I provided you with one sheet that will outline, and I hope you review it, the economic loss to Salem. But let me talk about, and you've heard about Corbin University and the loss of the golf tournament for, from the National NEI Tournament. We hosted that tournament about four and a half years ago. The loss to Salem, of the loss, and you've heard, we've lost that tournament. The loss to Salem, of the loss, and you've heard, we've lost that tournament for the future. And I've calculated that, but if you look at the actual numbers, very conservatively, of the loss to hotels in Salem, it amounts to me, in my calculations, over those three-year periods, of about $390,000 lost to Salem hotels. In addition, restaurants, it's hard for me to calculate, but if you look at approximately 1,500 people meals, times the three tournaments, that's 4,500 meals in restaurants in Salem over that three-year period. Keep in mind that Creekside holds other national tournaments as well. They've held the U.S. Senior Open Qualifier, again, more economics to the city of Salem. If Creekside fails to survive, due to, at least in part, because of the extreme high irrigator rates-
Excuse me, can you wrap up?
Yeah.
Your time is up.
It would be a major loss to Salem's economy.
Thank you.
I would ask if you do the right thing, and re-look at the irrigator rates, and its impact on Creekside.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? All right. Thank you for coming, we appreciate your testimony. All right, is it Darwin Sandow, followed by Steve Case?
Yes, it's Darwin Sandow.
Mm-hmm. Welcome.
My name's Darwin Sandow. I live at 715 21st Street, southeast Salem, that's Ward 2. And thank you, Mayor Peterson and Councilman, for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. I guess I had some written testimony I turned in in about 10 minutes to 5:00, I hope you got a copy of that. It's in regard to elderly people that are on low income. I think that system is broken, how you- I'm not asking for a handout, first of all, let me tell you more about myself. I became disabled in 1980, and my doctor said, "Don't go back into construction or dangerous work," while I ignored him, went back into floor covering, owned my own business for 15 years, and kept working, and kept, you know, until old age started getting to me. Unfortunately, I'm not old enough to claim that I'm a pioneer, and I want my water free. But I am living at the poverty level. My home that I'm paying for, still, my payment is about 72.5% of my income, and I still have my pockets. Where can you get this extra $4 a month out of my pockets, when they're empty and there's holes in there? Don't put your pet hand in my pockets, please. The problem with this low-income thing is, when, you can't receive the low-income energy assistance unless your water's been shut off, or you have a shut-off notice. If I'm wrong, somebody, please tell me. You have to go down to Salvation Army, they're the ones that offer this low-income assistance. And I feel that it should be something similar to the telephone assistance program, where you can get your low-income utility water payment paid, you know, a 5% to 10%. I'm not asking for a lot. Just something, you know, I can't afford golf. I wish I could. But for the Creekside people, when I was still working, I was a landscaper, and I mowed the lawns on Battle Creek Commons, and the maintenance people there told me that they were shutting down the Battle Creek Golf Course because of them not being able to pay their water bill. So, this water issue goes on for a long time, and it's, I've been a water customer since '74, 1974, and I've never had a late payment, and I've pretty much been a low-income.
Thank you for your testimony. I want to be sure that the staff can get in touch with you. If there's further information, I think I see Peter Fernandez right there with his card. We want to be sure that you're informed about the various programs that we have that do assist. Want to make sure that that's available to you. Thanks, Mr. Fernandez. He'll take care of that. Good. All right. Did councilors have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. All right, Stephen Case, followed by Evan White.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council members. My name is Steve Case, I am a resident of Creekside, and I think I probably have a different spin on this. Creekside is a private golf course, okay? It's not a public golf course, and it should be a self-supporting business. This business has been losing money for, I think, two years. The owner of Creekside, Mr. Turekowski, has been leaving the carrot on the stick in front of us for some time at Creekside. They wanted to raise our homeowners association fee $60 a month to keep the golf course open. Then they said, "If it doesn't pass, we're shutting it down in October." The golf course isn't going anywhere, okay? Now they're saying it's going to be, I'm sorry, Mr., did you say May was the next?
Excuse me?
Did you say May was the-
The original day.
The original day.
Originally, okay. And then it's going to be October. Mr. Turekowski actually isn't interested in running a golf course at all. I mean, he has set his pre-development plans through the planning department back on May 27th, to turn the golf course into 354 homes. So, it doesn't sound to me like subsidizing the golf course is really a prudent, a prudent thing to do. And what about people like the gentleman that just spoke? Why should low-income people have to subsidize a private, not public, a private golf course? It makes, as Bernie Sanders would say, "Makes no sense to me." Okay? And for the person that asked about the 230% increase, I talked to the, I'm sorry, Mr. Fernandez, your deputy director is-
Mr. Chandler.
Mr. Chandler. And I asked him about that today, and he said that the cost of the infrastructure to irrigate Creekside has got to be maintained for whether they use the water or not. Mr. Fernandez, is that, I think that's a true statement, isn't it? So, there you have it, okay? It should be run as a business. When my fishing license goes up every year, I have to pay the increase. If it costs more to play golf, then they could increase the $330 a month to something that will cover the water. And finally, I had a question for the city attorney. Are there members of the city council that are either members of Creekside Golf Course, live in Creekside Estates, or a member of another golf club that should abstain from voting due to conflict of interest?
Dan Atchison, city attorney. I don't give legal advice to private citizens, so I'm not prepared to answer that for you tonight. The council members, I know, you know, there's at least one council member who's a member of the golf course, as well as I am. I'm a social member of the course, but there's no vote tonight on the rates, so there is no conflict of interest at this point.
When will a vote take place?
There's a vote on the rates right now, but that rate doesn't include any kind of reduction to the irrigated rate that has been requested.
Very good. Thank you very much. Your time.
All right. Were there questions from councilors? All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Evan White, followed by Janet Long. Can I have a question? Lois Stark's name is on the list, but crossed out, is that correct?
No, I will have, I will-
You do want to speak? Oh, I'm sorry, then, okay, right after Mr. White, I'll call you up. Thanks. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm representing the Sunnyslope Neighborhood Association, but I believe I will be under three minutes. I'm Evan White, representing the Sunnyslope Neighborhood Association. We filed written testimony, and also public records requests, which unfortunately were never answered, which I think is unfortunate in terms of tonight's discussion, because I'm unable to give you precise information the way I would like to be able to do so. So, last Sunday, there was a full-page color ad in the Statesman Journal, saying it presents simple facts about irrigation rates. The ad says, "Let's have a public discussion based upon facts, not emotions," and I totally agree. The first fact to be noted is that there is no statement about who paid for the ad. The ad says, "Even with the proposed change in rates, irrigators would be paying the highest rates of any user." But this statement is misleading, because if irrigators are more costly to serve than other customer groups on a per-unit basis, then they should be paying more. The ad also says, "Fact, Salem does not have a shortage of water. Anyone who thinks that water is a free resource should read the book Cadillac Desert." As Mr. Fernandez has so eloquently said, the city of Salem has incurred substantial debt to pay for the network of pipes, pumping, and storage facilities that are used to provide water service to all customer classes. We also have to pay for the salaries and benefits of city staff who keep the system working for us." So, this statement in the ad is irrelevant. The next fact in the ad is, quote, "Since 2001, irrigators' rates have increased 230%, while residential rates have increased 88%." And the inference is that everything was okay back in 2001, and therefore, things must be out of whack today. Since the ad shows that in 2001, irrigators were paying less than residential customers, and since the most recent cost-of-service study shows that irrigators should be paying nearly twice what residential customers are paying on a residential basis, this statement in the ad is incorrect, and probably should be awarded to Pinocchio's. Finally, the ad says, "Fact, for years, irrigators have been subsidizing other users, resulting in lower rates for other categories." Whoever wrote this statement obviously has not been reading the city's most recent cost-of-service analysis-
Thank you, Mr. White. Your time is up. Can you wrap up real quickly, please?
Okay. I believe I get five minutes as a neighborhood-
Oh, is that right?
Which shows that irrigators are before, by far, the most expensive class of service.
Excuse me, Mr. White, I'm confused. Are you testifying as a result of a vote taken at your neighborhood association?
Yes.
Oh, thank you very much. I needed to clarify that.
September 15th.
Okay, go ahead.
There's no direct testimony. So, whoever wrote that sentence obviously has not been reading the city's most recent cost-of-service analysis, which shows that irrigators are before, by far, the most expensive class of service on a per-unit basis. I'm sure the Creekside people are wonderful, I know several of them, and I'm sorry about their dispute with Mr. Turekowski, but the facts do not justify any irrigation rate discount, which would shift the revenue burden onto other classes. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Janet Long, followed by Lowell Wetzel.
What about Ms. Stark?
I'm sorry, Lois Stark. Then we'll go to Janet Long. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name's Lois Stark, I live in Ward 2. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you to the mayor and our councilors. I know you put in a lot of time, and it's kind of a thankless job, so, thank you, especially my counselor, Tom Anderson. I am concerned that a for-profit business is asking for a lower water rate because their business is failing. This is not a private, a public golf course, this is private. Is this something that could set a precedent? Could other businesses that are failing ask for breaks from the city? What about nonprofits that are providing vital services to low-income people? Would they be able to come to the city, then, and ask for lower water rates or electricity rates, like the Creekside Golf people? It doesn't seem like $8 is much, but this is $8 for every single residential water user in Salem. And I don't know why I should, as a small residential water user, pay to keep a golf course green. Will I be able to take my walks in your park, as you call it? Will I be able to play golf in your Creekside Golf Course? It sounds like Creekside is a great community, and I have nothing against them personally, but if their golf course goes under, I'm sure that these generous people can still contribute to Grace House and the Susan Corman Cancer Foundation, and I hope they will, because they are great community people. If the schools and churches and cemeteries that are also in this rate-user group ask for, which I don't think they have, and need a water rate reduction, then I think we should consider that, because they serve the entire community. The Creekside Golf Course is a for-profit business, it is a private golf course. If they want to stay open, maybe they need to make a better business plan.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Lewis?
I wanted to ask if the nonprofits do get benefits, property tax, things like that. So, how should that be factored in? There is a great deal of support for those. And it may be, what I've heard is they don't come forward on the water issue, because they know they're getting a break everywhere else. So, I guess I don't understand tying them to the for-profit business.
What, from what I understood from the paper, that Creekside, in order to make it look like they were helping the community, then they added other people to this list of a group that would get lower water rates, and that included the schools and cemeteries and churches. That's why I said that. Is that not correct?
They're all part of one class.
Okay. Well, I stand corrected. That's what I understood.
Okay. Are there other questions? All right. Thank you very much, appreciate you coming down and your testimony. Janet Long, followed by Lowell Wetzel. Is Janet here? Janet Long? All right, we'll move to Lowell Wetzel.
Ah, hello.
Mr. Wetzel, I thought you were here.
Still here, still here.
Oh, there you are.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lowell Wetzel, I live in Ward 7, and, you know, I appreciate all the passion about golf courses and such, and activities. That is, you know, a very good thing. One thing I'd like to point out, though, is a little math trick, that especially those on Wall Street like to play. So, when you raise rates 231%, yes, that's great, but then if you reduce it, then by 30%, you only have raised it 61% total. So, if you've raised private citizens' rates 88%, you've thus raised private citizens greater than the amount you've raised their rates. So, the 30% decrease, you know, is a little bit of economic trickery. Also, you know, one thing, I grew up in desert climates, and one of the issues we had was trying to keep water to plants. And one of the things we found was hydrogel crystals, which is a polymer-like substance that you can put at the root level, and it keeps crops, it retains water, and it keeps the crops irrigated. It is not feasible for crops, as you till up the soil, but for a golf course, it would be perfect, and thus would reduce water usage. So, why haven't they, you know, done things like that to reduce their costs outright? And that would lower their rates over time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilors? All right. Thank you very much, appreciate your testimony. Okay, that concludes those who are on the list. Was there anyone else here this evening that did want to testify? All right. All right, if you'll just move to the microphones and introduce yourself, give your name and your ward or address, and you'll have again the three minutes.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Dan Dolan. I live in West Salem. I'm sure Creekside Golf Course is a wonderful place and does wonderful things. I don't know, I'm not a golfer, but this is what I get out of this. Creekside is a private business. It's a private golf course. And it seems to me grossly unfair to ask every residential water user in the city to pay to subsidize that club. I think there's something wrong with their business plan. So I thank you for your time. I'm sure the voters will probably look at it the same way. Thank you.
Are there questions from councilors? Thank you. Yes, welcome.
Hi, my name's Carl Wozniak. I'm a resident of the Morningside.
Carl, I'm sorry, Carl, your last name?
Wozniak, W-O-Z-N-I-A-K.
Okay.
Morningside Neighborhood, Ward Two. My daytime position, I'm a hydrogeologist with the state of Oregon, but I'm not here in an official capacity. I'm here as a private citizen. I think, in my opinion, the city should promote conservation of water via rate structures that encourage conservation in the long term, progressively higher rates for higher use. Water supply may be ample now, but will not be so in future, and it makes good public policy to ensure that rates reflect that. Secondly, I would say I don't believe that residents of high-value neighborhoods who want to preserve their property values should do so by asking other neighborhoods to subsidize what is a private benefit. That's all I have to say.
All right. Are there questions from councilors? Okay, thank you very much. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing now, and then we'll have questions for staff from Peter Fernandez or others that he designates. Counselor Bennett, I saw your hand up.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Fernandez, a couple of questions. The most common question I get from ratepayers about this time of year, sometimes all year, is, why am I paying more on my water bill and I'm using less water?
Well, the first answer to this has been rate increases.
Yeah.
So, obviously, it costs.
But I'm just, I am using less and less water.
It costs more. The other thing is, we have proposed, and we have a proposal before you tonight, we've moved more of the billing to the fixed. We did that, we proposed that four years ago. The council adopted that, and we propose a little more today. There was a time, and you saw it, in fact, Andrew, go get the screens back up, there was a time when we thought we were running out of water. And that was in the early 90s, and so there was a big move to move to rates that were more volume-based. And since the early 2000s, the bottom has fallen out of water demand. Great for the environment, great for citizens. This isn't just an issue in Salem, it's an issue throughout the country, a practice throughout the country, low-flow toilets, low-flow showerheads, low-flow washing machines, people irrigate less. So when, when the usage went in that direction, we had to start to make a shift from volumetric rates, from basing all of our revenues on volumes, to basing some of our revenues on fixed. Because, as I said in my presentation, we have pipes that we have to maintain, we have pumps that we have to run, and we have to do that whether somebody opens the tap or not. You know, we provide the service 24 hours a day, whether you need it or not, it's on call to you. So as we move more of this, more of the billing to fixed, that's where you end up paying more on your bill, whether you use more or less. And that's why, when we get to the end, and I say, hey, there's a smaller impact on low users, but it's a higher percentage base, is because, you know, if you use high volumes, you're going to pay, you're getting a little bit of a break, but if you're a low-volume user, you're percentage-wise, you're going to, you're going to pay more.
So we're essentially not abandoning, but getting closer and closer to abandoning the kind of rate structure advocated by the gentleman who was a hydrogeologist. Is that what you're doing?
Right. We have, we are moving away from that and into, I mean, we still have, the majority of our rates are still based on, on volume, but I will tell you that two years from now, we will probably recommend another shift towards fixed to stabilize our revenues. We've had years, in fact, virtually every year that we have a rate increase, we don't realize the revenues that we think we're going to, that we think we're going to realize from, from the rates. This last year, we finally had more, more revenues. The staff saves a lot of money, and that's how we've been able to, to balance the books.
So the issues in play here are not about use patterns. I mean, that's not the, it doesn't sound like the issue at play is about use and use patterns being driven by, by these rates particularly.
Well, in fact, the fact that there are lower rates, the fact that there's lower usage is why we've had to propose moving more of the billing to the fixed portion.
In fact, we sold, we sold water rights this year. I've gotten a lot of questions about that, that we sold Hillsborough water rights.
Right, so.
So we got more water than we thought we would in 25 years ago.
We do. We draw our water from, and it's good to clarify that because there's a lot of questions that arise from that. We draw our water from the North Santium River. We own 147 million gallons a day of water rights on that river. Those are fully certificated, so we have access to them whenever we need them. Our peak day is below 50 million today, so we have excess water at this point that we own, that the city owns. City's blessed to own it. We don't predict fully using those, the water in the North Santium River till about the year 2100 at the rate that we're going. We also own another 200 million gallons on the Willamette River. Our plumbing isn't set up for the Willamette. Our forefathers, my predecessors, were, happened to purchase them. It's a great purchase. Hillsborough asked for some of those Willamette River water rights, and that's what we sold them. So when we realize that revenue, those $16 million, we will be able to use that money for other capital improvements that we continually have for the, for the utility. So it was a good, it was a good deal for the, for the city of Salem, it was a good deal for the city of Hillsborough.
How much did we sell?
Huh?
How much water?
50, 48 million gallons per day.
Okay.
So it was, it was a fraction, 50 million, I forget the exact amount, but it was, it was a fraction of the, of the 200 million. It wasn't all of them.
And then just finally, one of the issues that came up during the discussion that I'm interested in is the impact of loss of revenue from the close, if Creekside were to close, stop being a customer as an irrigator. We continue to have the residential customers out there and perhaps a commercial customer at the, at the restaurant, but we lose that irrigator portion. What is the loss? I heard about 200,000.
200,000.
If that happens, how are we going to, how will that be offset? How will that be done?
Well, you know, the, you know, we, we run a business that, that has, you know, $80 million in revenue. So $200,000 a year really is not a significant impact to the, you know, to Salem's, to Salem's utility business.
It won't be passed on to the ratepayers, then?
It's just too small an amount to really, to really make a difference.
How much is involved, then, in this rate change that's proposed here?
Right. So the, so the rate change proposal, and I see that there's some confusion, so I appreciate you asking, counselor. You know, when Creekside approached us as a customer and said, hey, you know, we have problems with, with what we're paying for, you know, $200,000 to our business, to our $80 million business, is really not significant. $200,000, obviously, to, to the Creekside Golf Course business is a big deal, based on their testimony. We could not recommend a, just simply giving them a break, because as, as there was some testimony, anybody can ask for a break. You know, a church can ask for a break, a cemetery can ask for a break, you know, any other business. So we could not support just simply giving them a break. What we realized as we did work on this is that, that we could look at the irrigation customer class, the classification, and looking at that, we saw, as we, as we dug into it, that we could make a recommendation to reduce the cost of the customer class. And that had come about, you know, as we've done, as we've done some research, because these numbers that are cited, we provided them. So, so we said, hey, there is an opportunity to do that because we can see that because of this reduction in, in water demand, that there has been a reduction in peaking that are affecting these, these costs. And that's why we said that if the task force wanted to make a recommendation, this is the way that a, that a recommendation could be done, was by reducing the irrigator customer class. And that's where, because everything has to be in balance, because we operate a zero-sum, we don't operate a for-profit business, so, so everything has to be in balance. Other rates had to, you know, that 30% reduction in irrigator customer classification rates, then the other classes had to increase, and that's where this 65 cent comes in, and that's where this question about, well, what about churches and what about the, the, the school district and the state? Those entities have irrigation meters. So it's not their, you know, the, the school district has meters for their buildings, and they also have irrigation meters. The state of Oregon has meters for their businesses, for their buildings, and they also have irrigation meters. So that's where that money came from, or those, those other customers came in. 65 cents was the total. Creekside represents, Creekside is a big, is our biggest water customer. Creekside represents about 8 cents of that, of that 65 cent. As we, as we were talking about, that, you know, they represented, you know, around, you know, 10, 11, 12% of that, of that amount.
Just finally, that 65 cents, that total irrigator change, what, what was the total cost of that shift? What's, how do you get to the 65 cents? What's the total amount that's been reduced? Do you see what I'm saying? Is it 500,000? Is it?
Yeah, 30% of $2 million.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, 600,000 was, was the amount.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I moved to this end because, you know, my, my support is sitting behind me. Yeah. Yeah, if Alicia was sitting over there, I would have stayed over there.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
Are there other questions? I see Counselor Anderson, Counselor Bednarz.
Go ahead, Warren. Go ahead, Warren. Thank you. Yeah, I had actually several, and as long as we're on the subject matter, can we talk a little bit more about COSA?
Sure.
The Cost of Service Analysis that's going to be coming up in 2018, I think it is? Because it was a considerable amount of conversation about what, within our water, wastewater task force.
Right. So the definition, it's a COSA, C-O-C-A, is the acronym for Cost of Service Analysis. We base our rates, and have for many years, on a cost-of-service model, and all that is is taking our costs for everything, so including everything from operations to capital to debt service, and allocating it by user. And the way we allocate by user is, it depends on how much water they use, at what times of day do they use it, how, when do they peak? So, so irrigators tend to be more expensive because they, they demand a lot of water in a very short amount of time, you know, in the summertime, where an industry that is producing year-round has a very stable demand. It might be a high demand, but it's a very stable demand year-round. So, so we have to operate differently. Our pumps, we have to provide bigger pumps that have to be at the ready to pump more water when that is demanded. So that's an example of why Cost of Service exists, and it's the fairest way. It's complicated. I saw some, I saw some commentary where there was, one email says, hey, this is, this is crazy, you guys are cheating, just make it simple, charge everybody the same. Well, that's, be fair, charge everybody the same. That's not fair, because different customers demand different amounts. So if everybody was, was a single-family home, then we could charge everybody the same, because we have vastly different users, the fairest way to do it, and that's why council adopted this methodology years ago, is to allocate costs based on your demands on the system. So that's, that's what COSA is.
And that is coming up in 2018.
Right. So we adopted, you know, COSA was adopted, you know, many years ago, I think in the 90s. Yeah. And, and it, and it should be, the original cost-of-service model, and it needs to be updated periodically. Our last update was in 2012, so we're gonna, we're gonna go for an update two years from now when we come back with the rate proposal. And, and what really has, has, has shown, we have not been as diligent in updating it at, at regular intervals. We've had reasons for that. The biggest one is that a lot of the, the changes that we've made to the rates over the years have taken many years to implement. You know, we tend to phase a lot of stuff in. So this was the first year that there is no phasing in, it's just straight, straight rates, we're not implementing anything. So we're gonna, we're gonna update COSA two years from now, and then we're gonna come back and propose to council here shortly that we just, by, by policy, we go on a four-year cycle of taking a look at COSA. So we'll be on a, every two-year cycle for rates, and then every other cycle, so every fourth year, we'll update the cost-of-service model, so we can address questions like, like this. We've had these kinds of, of requests before. You know, Creekside is not the first large customer that's come to us and said, or small customer, come to us and said, hey, something's out of whack, give us a hand. So we've, we've addressed these kinds of issues before.
So unfortunately, it might be two years before it really is addressed in this COSA project, process, is what I'm hearing. That's really the kind of the time that we should be looking at the rates and making the changes then.
Right, and you'd look at both. We'd have a, we'd have an update to the COSA that then informs what the rate proposal would be in, in 2018.
And even though tonight we've been speaking almost solely about Creekside, aren't there just a few hundred irrigation meters out there? Can you give me a number?
Yes, yes, there are. It depends on the month, the people open and close them, but our peak this year was 691 irrigation meters.
So it affects quite a few more, obviously not near as high water user as that. I want to shift my attention to something else that's been talked about. The Creekside Golf Course is, is obviously a natural place that has, absorbs a lot of the rainwater that hits it. Certainly, there's a section down towards, I'll get the street wrong, but it's down towards the main road that goes out south. I always get Sunnyside and Sunny View mixed up, but anyway.
Side, side is the one, on the west side, view is the one that you can look at headed west. That's how I keep them straight.
Thank you. So, so my question is this, so homes went in, is, don't they have to keep some of that flood area open for, for drainage retention?
Yeah, so it's a complicated area. We've looked at the maps. There are some easements out there that the city of Salem owns. There are some floodways, some that are, that are, you know, federally designated, and then there is, then there's flood plain. So if, so those, so a lot of those areas have to be protected anyway. And the, the, the initial layout that, that Mr. Tokarski's company and his consultants have put together addressed some of those issues. So the question then becomes, and, and, you know, it would just be as we, if, if a development proposal came about, what else would they need to do? So beyond reserving those lands that are either already owned, easements are already owned by the city, or there's, or there're floodways, what else needs to do to address the flood control issues and the stormwater issues from, from any new development?
Are there improvements that we could do as a, or Creekside could do to help the community of not just Salem but Turner? Because that watershed heads out from there towards Turner before it turns right around and comes back down to us on State Street.
Yeah, they would have to do that, you know, as part of their analysis, as part of any development review and approval process. And then, but I've, as I've had conversations, as I've had conversations with Mr. Tokarski, I've said, so, so we have what is already limited, what the city already owns, what they are proposing, what they be required to do, and then the next question after all of that is, would the city want to purchase some additional lands to keep that? They wouldn't be a golf course, but would we want then to purchase some additional lands for this issue related to stormwater management and flood control? And I can't answer that question until we get through that entire, entire process. But, but that is a significant flood area. We bought the Battle Creek properties because of that, to address that. We've made improvements out there, and we would be very interested in assuring that that would continue to be.
But once the city acquires that land, it will never be a golf course if it did so for that reason.
Oh, no, no, no. It would be for, it would be, it would be green, you know, it would be for, for flood control. It might be open space that could be manicured to some, to some ability, but I, I would not foresee it as, as any kind of, I would foresee it as passive recreation, not active recreation.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Following up on, on what Counselor Bednarz was just talking about, it sounds like if this is not a golf course and some other development of homes go in there, as part of the development process, in effect, the city would ensure that there will not be, as far as can be reasonably projected, any increase in flooding or any increase in stormwater runoff. Would that be correct?
In fact, that's the requirement. That's the new requirement.
So, so the discussion about, gee, if we get rid of the golf course, we're going to end up end up with more flooding downstream, as a practical matter, is not gonna happen?
We would.
You would do everything you could to ensure it would happen?
I would hate somebody to, 15 years from now to say, hey, the public works director said it would never happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Nature's a tough.
They would say that the city council said it would never happen.
But that is, that is the intent, and that's, the planning and the analysis would be about.
I'm gonna jump in here and, and remind everybody that we really have a question on, tonight before us in this public hearing, has to do with the rate, the water rates that are, are in the, on the agenda. I don't really want to have our conversation during this hearing veer off to other related issues. Those are certainly ones that maybe you could bring up at some other time. I just want to protect the record and make sure that we are focused in here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't ask, then I won't ask another question about that, but I will ask just a general question then. Any new houses that come in, any new development, they're gonna be paying for water too?
That's correct.
Okay, then.
Counselor Anderson, I'm really serious about this.
I'm done with that, I'm done, I'm done.
All right. Counselor Nanki has his hand up. Counselor Nanki?
I'll wait till Brad's done, I have some other questions.
Essentially, what I was gonna say is if some other motion comes up besides staff recommendation, we'll have the opportunity to ask staff more questions in regards to what the implications of that would be. A comment that I want to throw in.
All right, Counselor Anderson?
Thanks, I have some questions, and I'll direct it to Mr. Fernandez.
Are they about the rate?
Yes, they're directed to Mr. Fernandez's presentation that he made.
All right.
It looks like on the, the residential rates, you are proposing an increase of 3% per year over the foreseeable future?
For rates in general.
So, right, so let's, right, so, so let's, let me, let me bring up the, the correct slide. So, so I have used this slide now, I think this is probably the third rate proposal that I've used this slide, and, and I think it's important for council and the community to understand what our rate model is based on, or if, and this is, I only show you to 2022, this model goes out many, 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 many years.
And does it continue to go out showing 3%?
Showing threes, right, to, to make, to make the math work. But, let me, let me do my little, my little animation here. So, so two years ago, we showed the council, you know, threes. Our financial situation is not a lot better, so we were able to recommend lower rates, a lower, a lower increase. So every year.
It could be different.
We're gonna, we're gonna, it could be higher, too. We work our tails off to make sure, because I've shown 3% forever.
Sure, you're doing your best efforts, and your best efforts could result in less than 3%. But despite your best effort, it could be more than 3%.
Correct.
So, I don't know, know where I learned this, but there is something called the Rule of 60 that says you divide the number of percentage into it, and so you double. So, under the Rule of 60, residential water rates could double in 20 years if it's 3% per year.
That's right.
Okay, then I have a question about the low-income match, or the, if you could bring up that slide, please. So, the, the, thank you, I couldn't read on the small, now, these matching donations up to 10,000 per fiscal year, when we get our water bill, there's a, we have a little blue sheet, or yellow sheet, or green sheet, or something, says, would you like to contribute to, to assist people? Is that what you're talking about?
Right, so what, what we propose to the, to the task force is that, you know, the program, the background on this, first of all, is that the program, over the last few years since the financial crisis, has run out of money from time to time. People have been very, very generous. Robert Chandler and I sign every, every, every donation letter. So, so we see, you know, who's donated, how much have donated, and it's very humbling to see that. With the crisis, the program has, from time to time, run out of money. So what we, what we proposed was, could we do something to see if we don't run out of money, so we can continually help the, the people that need help? So this, this recommendation would match dollar for dollar, up to $10,000.
Per individual contribution? So somebody gives, somebody gives $10,000 a year, one individual, you'd be matching that.
Boy.
Yeah, 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 well, we'll give them a big award, too, but, but if somebody gives, you know, $500 a year.
We would match it dollar to dollar.
Okay, so, so it'll be, it, it, basically, you're, yeah, you're doubling what is done, because I'm sure not very many people, if anybody's giving $10,000.
And we came up with 10,000 because we've never gotten a $10,000 donation, so we've always gotten slightly less. So it was a great way to be able to double the, the programs about there.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor McCoy?
I'm gonna ask about the rate case. This is really hard as the Gabby Irishman not to talk about the other stuff, but I can't, so. I've been biting my tongue for two hours here. Peter, there's, there's something in here, I know we've talked about it before, and you're talking about the way you calculate a sewer-based volume, and it was four months, and then you looked at doing three months, and because, could you explain that to me? I read it about three times, and I couldn't really quite figure out what you were, what you were doing.
Certainly, so, so the way we calculate sewer bases, basically what, what customers, except for, except for the sewer customers, that we actually measure their sewage, which is about 12, 15 customers that are, that, what do we call it, are permitted industries, so industries that have federal permits. So for everyone else, we don't, we don't measure sewer, so we need to use the water meter, the readings on the water meter, to make an assumption about what you use for sewer. Well, the way we do that, to discount for irrigation and any outdoor use, is we use winter average. So we start with the first reading in November, and we go for four months, November, December, January, and February, and then take the average of those four months, and that sets your sewer base. That's what you pay for sewer for the entire year. So, so, so over the years, there have been questions from customers about, is that fair? You know, a November reading has October, if October was dry, you could still be irrigating, so should we shift it back a month? But, but in, but a March reading could start to have some irrigation. So, so there is some imperfections there. What we, what we do is, we look for outliers. So, so, hey, you have a big family, and every December, the kids come home, and grandma comes home, and everybody takes long showers, and, you know, we throw a water party. If every month your December is crazy, we discount the December, because it's out of whack.
Gotcha.
So we do that, that kind of discounting. One of the things that we talked about, that, that might be in the, in the report, is, should we shift? You know, should we shift to December to March? And what we found is that, in fact, the result of that is that it would be fairer, because there is some irrigation in October and less irrigation in March, that would then lower the revenue. So by being fairer, we would have to propose a higher rate increase for everyone, because again, we want, we run a zero-sum game here. So, so we, we need the revenues to operate our business.
So then my question would be, that's what I thought I read.
Right.
It's the same people paying it anyway.
That's exactly correct.
So, what is fair and not fair? I mean, does it make any difference?
That's why, that's why we didn't recommend it. But a customer, a customer who, who is not here, but he had participated a lot in previous rate proposals, had, and had testified a number of times, had brought it up, and we promised that we would look at it. So we looked at it, we agree with, with his conclusions, we proved his conclusions, but financially, it didn't make any sense.
Okay. You have another one, you're talking about debt to rap, revenue ratio?
Yes.
And it's going down steadily, and I think you mentioned in your talk, it was way up there, 100%.
Yes.
You've got it way down there.
Yes.
Do you have a target number?
Oh, we're way past our target.
So what was your target? Okay, what's, what's the best practices ratio that it should be?
For debt service.
You want us to move toward 2?
Yeah, towards, yeah, yeah, towards 2.
2%?
Yeah, well, 2, 2 times, so, so, so revenue at 2 times the debt service. That's what the ratio means. So, so whatever our debt service is, our revenues would be twice that.
That was true.
Yeah, but we are, but because we are, we are decreasing our debt service, our ratios are excellent.
Well, yeah, it's, you're projecting 14%. It continues to go down, I'm going.
Right, and we're paying off our debt.
Well, I know, but in some case, if you have all this deferred maintenance and you're struggling for capital improvements, wouldn't, wouldn't there be some happy medium at, I pick a number, 20 or 25, that you want to settle at, to have more money to, to fix the infrastructure?
So our goal is, let me, let me bring it back, that's an excellent question, Counselor. Our goal is, let me, let me, let me bring up this table again. So, so our goal here in, in capital is to get to 40 million. And, and you see our debt service is, is declining, so, so in reality, we're already at 33.6 million here, between debt service and, so if we could get to 40 million, my sense is that we probably would never have to incur debt unless we had some major catastrophe, some major need. That's what I've been trying to achieve. I don't know if we'll get there. At some point, we may have to borrow again. The problem with borrowings is they drive up rates, because you have to, you have to cover.
But at some point, if that debt service continues to drop.
Right.
You're, you're in a, you're a zero-sum game, you're not gonna get to your 40 million, right?
Sure, oh, no, yeah, sure we are.
If you get it down to zero.
Sure we are, yeah.
What's the number to get to 40 million?
Yeah, we'd be a cash basis utility, that'd be a great thing.
Should that be great, but what, so what number would it be to get to 40 million?
Oh, we're years out.
Okay.
It's, we're years out, but it's a great goal.
Sure. Two other questions, Madam Mayor. One, you, you said the, the whole infrastructure was valued at $4 billion. How do you arrive at that?
Oh, sure.
Somebody come out and add up every, or is that an estimate, or what?
In essence, we, we, we took every pipe, every pump, every reservoir, and asked ourselves, so if we had to build it today, what would it cost? And that's, that's how we valued it. So it's, it's a way, because when we have to replace it, we have to replace it at the cost that it is today. So, so that's, that is, that's how we came up with the value. We came up with that value several years ago, we've been inflating it a little bit. So, so it really is just a way of, you know, when we're looking at this number, you know, when we're looking at, well, how much capital should we be, but what is our goal? Where are we going? You know, we needed to figure out a way to, to have a number. You know, what is that number? So, so by doing that asset management approach, we were able to say, okay, and we're making the assumption that everything lasts 100 years by only going 1%, so 40 million seems like a rational goal to achieve.
Well, that's my, I asked where you got that number, because that's where you get to 40 million.
Right.
That was just my curiosity. Okay, final question, and it's, it has to do with delinquent customers and.
Yes.
The whole people that aren't able to pay and all those kinds of things. How, are, is somebody delinquent the first month they don't pay? Or is it, when do you gonna, when, when do they go to a credit?
Not for a little while. Margot Williams, our, our customer service manager, is gonna, is gonna tell you exactly what that is.
Good evening, Margot Williams, Customer Services Manager. So an account is delinquent after they have not, after they've passed their due date. A customer has 25 days to pay their bill. If the 26 days come and they haven't paid, then the account is basically delinquent. We give the customer seven days to pay, seven additional days. If they don't pay the bill within that seven days, we give them seven more days before we'll take some kind of action such as shutting off the water or turning them over to collections.
Okay, so do it, after, whatever, it's 26 days, do you, they get another notice from you saying, hey, you're overdue?
They do, they receive a courtesy reminder notice saying, hey, we, we haven't received your payment yet, we're gonna give you an additional seven days to pay. If we haven't received the payment, after that time has passed, we send another notice saying, hey, your account is delinquent, we haven't received payment, you have seven more days to pay before your service will be disconnected or turned over to collections.
So until you, and as I understood it, you're, you're now starting to report delinquent accounts to the credit bureaus, starting, moving forward. Up until now, up until now, you didn't do that, so you just shut the service off?
Well, their, their services shut off if we actually have services to shut off if it's an account that doesn't have water service. Let's say they're just a stormwater-only account. We, they are sent to collections after they miss that second payment deadline.
Okay.
And at that point, the collection agency will work on collecting that debt.
So I'm more concerned about somebody that's having a tough time. Water's sort of a basic necessity along with electricity and a, and a home. And so I'm more concerned about people having a tough time. We've heard testimony, and God knows, we've got enough letters from people on fixed incomes that are concerned about giving a $2 or $3 a month increase. Those are the people I'm concerned about, that boom bam, they're gone to a collection agency, I don't want to see that happen.
You know, the only people that go to collections are the, are the people that don't call us. So, so the, we have customer service representatives, they, they take hundreds of calls daily. We take calls all the time. Hey, I'm having a tough time, I've been laid off, I had a big, we will automatically, in fact, Margot has authority to put people on, on a payment plan. You know, what can you pay? You owe us this bill, what can you pay? Hey, I can pay $5 a month until I pay it off. Okay, you're on $5 a month, you gotta keep paying your other bills. So, but, we, so, so people that end up, I mean, think, people that end up in collections are, we can't shut off an apartment building, but the, but the, the owner refuses to pay the bill. We know that there's a person on, on dialysis, we can't shut that off. We have a house that's sewer-only, water, water well, but on sewer, well, there's no way to shut off sewer. So those are the people that then may refuse to, to, to pay, have not made an arrangement, made an arrangement and then never followed up, or only paid for a month, and those are the people that end up in collections.
Okay, so, there's oversight in this, it's just not a carte blanche thing?
Right, right. And, and, and Margot is a very patient customer service manager. People just need to call and then follow up. And I'll tell you that, it's 49,000 bills a month, and it's 500, 600 troublesome accounts, and they seem to recur. So, so it's a very small fraction of what, of the issue, they just recur quite a bit. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a question about the, I don't know, what you call it, that blue or green sheet that comes in that you can donate to the fund. And, and we discussed the, doing the online bill pay, you know, when we met, we talked a little bit about that. And I was just looking at the site, is there a way to donate to that fund online, or do you have to just write a check, or how does that work?
Yeah, so, so, so that's one thing that we don't have yet. We've talked about it. It's been whispered in my ear that with the new website, it'll be more prominent, so, so we are working on that, so that people can, in fact, my wife just commented to me as I was previewing the presentation, which she, by the way, she said was very boring, but, but I previewed it for her, and she said, she said, hey, you know, we're on online, you know, we, we pay automatically, how do I donate? So, and that's, that, that is problematic at this moment.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Peter, your wife was right.
Thank you, Counselor.
Are there further questions for staff? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion for us at this point?
She already closed. So, before we had questions, I'll.
Shall I read it? I move the staff recommendation?
Yeah.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second?
It's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Nanki to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Counselor, yes. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And having chaired that committee for several years, and, you know, it was at Counselor Bennett's request in my follow-up, the system is political, and not so much on one business versus another, but when you look at the overall impacts of any rate change, we can go back to the stormwater breakout and what it actually did to some of those big-box commercial types, or just places that had large amounts of impervious surface. We looked at the impact to those businesses, and we said, holy crap. Because originally, single-family residential was gonna actually get a slight reduction because of that. And because of the impact, council chose not to implement it as staff had presented, and we took all of the residential streets and stuck them into the base rate. So residential properties took the hit, because there's 38,000 of them. They always will get the hit. You know, industrial customers a few years back were essentially on the hook for all the fire flow and most all of the storm system as well, because it was based on your flow, and the large industrial customers are popping 3 million gallons a day. So we looked at those and what goes into base rates and fixed rates. That being said, everybody, what staff brought us in the wastewater, water, wastewater task force, we asked them to go look for information on whether or not there was a case to be made. One of the irrigation customers had come almost two years ago, right after we did, you know, last one, and they said this would be the appropriate time to bring it forward. Knowing that there's changes throughout the entire system, and knowing that residential always gets hammered, and seeing that potential, not reduction in rates, but reduction in the rate slope for this year, it's like, when will residential customers ever get a break? And to me, that was this year. I'm assuming, based on the information that the task force went through this year, in two years, when we do a new COSA, all of that information will come forward, and there will be a rate shift, but there'll be shifts throughout the entire system as well. And by taking one of those kind of out of order now, versus balancing where everything is moving all at once and having a nice big picture, it was decided to bring that to council to beat around and see what popped out of here, versus the task force actually putting a recommendation on, based on previous iterations back and forth as well. So I just wanted to clarify that and where my position personally stands on it.
Thank you. Okay. Other discussion? Oh, I don't, I see none. Counselor McCoy?
I would, just a comment for me, you know. I would say, this is the first time in the 15 years lived at Creekside. I'm sorry, I live at Creekside and don't live somewhere else in the ward, so I could have represented those folks a little better. I apologize for that. But on the other hand, I told them to come down here, tell their story. I think they did a wonderful job, and I thank you for doing that. I think it's great. We sit here day after day, or week after week, and usually it's a pretty empty chamber. So it's great to see this many people who care about an issue came down to defend their issue and did it in such an eloquent manner. I was proud of all of you. It was a great job. So with that, I'm still disappointed in the process. The rationale was fine, and I will be voting no on this because of that.
I'd like to be absolutely certain that the entire council understands what we're voting for or voting against this evening. It's the rate changes that are presented in the report. It does not include any further adjustment with regard to irrigators, be they schools, or cemeteries, or golf courses, or any other irrigator. Okay?
Correct.
All right. So the motion on the floor by Counselor McCoy, seconded by Counselor Nanki, is to move the staff recommendation, which is to adopt the resolution for the water, wastewater, and stormwater rates effective January 1, 2017, and January 1, 2018. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
All right. With the nays, it's Counselor Nanki, I'm sorry, Counselor McCoy and Counselor Lewis have voted no. Motion passes. Thank you. All right.
We hit everything else before it.
Zipping back, and there's no one else signed up for public comment. Any further public comment? No new business, nor mayors or council items. We are adjourned.